She's making fun. In your right family can say that to you. Well, you know, a lot of times when you're interested, you lean in. On small groups, you lean in to talk.
I kind of wondered, is there gonna like, you know, let's out early for snow. I'm like, are you joking? Like, not a chance, small child. My daughter's enjoyed all online, but she's really looking forward to it now. I know, mine's got, we got a text this morning from Jerome that said, your bus is gonna be five minutes. Okay, fine. It was five minutes early. And one of her, yeah, and so it was a, good thing mom has to go off. I don't know where that bed's at. Disappeared. All I have is gum.
Yeah, Sammy, I thought, are we gonna get, do you know where our laptops went?
Are they in, they're stacked up in the corner right here?
Yep.
They didn't put it in.
I, there's a little packet on my desk. I mean, if somebody needs.
We can just use those.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have an extra copy of the full packet on my desk if somebody needs. I, I will move my, um, plug here. I just want to cheat just a little. Why do you try to hold your tongue? I want, I want a self-help.
You should threaten me.
Oh. Whatever happened to you happened to me when I watched. That's what made the, uh, like, I was, I'll do something right away. It was not. Well, so Christmas, I was already getting by you. That's exactly what it is. That's the problem with mine. Sixth grader's phone. She still has, she's been passing down the iPhone six. And then she should be like trying to take it. And she's like, Mom, it's always so glitchy. I need your phone. I'm like.
Welcome to our life. We're gonna try to restart it now. While we're dealing with all of our tech.
Oh, it's gonna take an update.
Well, we can stop out.
It already did this earlier today, so.
Should be pretty quick.
I screamed says we're hung on updates, so. We're still talking honest.
You guys have a alert for the smell?
Yes. See micro.
Well, I'm gonna take advantage of that.
Thanks, that's the first time in forever we've all been able to sign to you there. I'm gonna get like performance anxiety. I might just. Amy, did you see the back of the Orvis packet? I did. That's awesome. He actually said it to me home. That is so cool. Atherica in the U.S. Yes. Autographs. Fifty degrees? I, I made the.
Yeah, thank you very much.
The question, the person, I should check that. Alright. Are you on like five inches of rose on it? I'm like, where? What do I do?
Ready?
I think.
You ready to go?
We're ready.
Alright. Well, I can't tell you how delighted I am to have an opportunity, um, not only to, uh, finally deliver, uh, this long-waited work session, uh, but to be able to do it in person. I mean, um, I'm, 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 you know, I'm, I'm not tested anything, so I don't wanna, uh, put out those vibes, but I'm, um, I'm, I'm very, uh, emotionally expressive communicator. So a lot of my superpower powers derive from in-person learning. And, and so this whole, um, season, um, you know, COVID has really challenged me in my superpowers, so to speak. So with that, um, we, we know that, uh, we have a, 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 a large agenda, uh, after our time. And so we're gonna, um, you know, intentionally, we're gonna give you a drink with a fire hose. So it is not intended to be the be-all, end-all, but, uh, start of a conversation that I hope that we can continue, um, to be invited, uh, to engage in more, uh, learning, okay? I just wanna remind us of why we're here, why we're doing this. Um, and those of you who've been around me, um, and doing this work know that I affectionately refer to, um, our students sometimes as, as our babies, as, as our own, and I do that to personalize, um, you know, every student in, in, in our district. Um, because, uh, as a district, we are committed, um, to make you certain that all of our learners have, uh, lifelong, um, have the skills that will prepare them for, um, lifelong success personally, professionally. Uh, but we know that, um, our learners come to us differently. Um, they have different learning styles. Um, they have different, um, home situations. Um, you know, some of them are differently able. Some of them, um, you know, come from different, from very socioeconomic status. And, um, that's not good, that's not bad. It's just, that's our reality. And, and so what we wanna do in our work is become effective at being able to work through all those differences that may make a difference. Um, and develop a robust skill set along the way that can, um, help us as a system to be effective, um, in solving, um, complicated problems, okay? So before we go any further, because we're gonna, um, get up and do a little bit of work, um, and maybe, uh, deviate from, you know, more of your traditional sessions. And I'm not hating on those sessions. I'm just, you know, I, I like to, to work and, and, you know, uh, walk away with some takeaways or what have you. Uh, I just wanna ground us in this work that we call diversity, equity, inclusion, okay? And so, and I understand that we're coming to this work from different perspectives, different places. Um, as educators committed to educational justice, we approach our work today with the understanding that languages, literacies, histories, and cultural ways of people from minoritized communities based on race, sex, national origin, language, religion, or disabilities are not pathfinding. Beginning with the understanding, and understanding fought for across the centuries allows us to see the fallacy of measuring people solely against the white middle class, norms of knowing and being that continue to dominate notions of educational achievement. We are committed to envisioning and look, and creating learning environments that are not filled through a lens of contempt, pity, but rather are centered on content in complex ways with rich and innovative linguistic literature and cultural practices of indigenous Americans, African Americans, Latinx, Asian Americans, Pacific Islanders, and other youth in communities of cover, color, with and without disabilities, okay? So I just want us to be, be mindful of how we're coming into this space and, and how we're all at different places in our own development. Um, some of you may have heard me, uh, refer to the, the IDI, the intercultural development inventory. Um, um, I have the opportunity to, uh, administer this tool, um, with, with some of our, uh, leaders in the district, uh, and, and use this theoretical framework, um, to really hone in on coming, you know, becoming more proficient and masterful in how we live out DEI, and how we live out, um, cultural, uh, competency or intercultural competency. I use those interchangeably. And so I don't know if you are familiar, um, there's another psychometric instrument that's really popular. Um, the Myers-Briggs, the MBTI. Just start a show of hands. Y'all familiar with the Myers-Briggs? Yeah, a few folks. Okay, so the MBTI is a, a, a personality assessment, right? It's, it's a, a personality type indicator. And the theory is called youth theory. And the MBTI is the tool that measures the theory. So similar to the MBTI types indicator, the Myers-Briggs, um, the IDI, um, the theory comes from the developmental model of in-cultural sensitivity, the DMIS, uh, developed by Milton and J. M. Bennett, and later developed by Dr. Mitchell Hammer. And so the IDI is a, a five-stage model that explores differences from, uh, from, from, from lower levels of complexity to greater, greater levels of complexity. And so what do I mean by that? And so first stage, um, on the development continuum is called denial. And so in this stage, this is where someone would miss cultural differences altogether. Um, it's relatively benign. And again, and, 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 you know, and I just wanna preface that this doesn't mean that, you know, a person on this development continuum, um, it doesn't speak to, um, their character, their motivation, harp, you know, all it poses to measure is, you know, be their degree, their cultural capability of being able to navigate with sophistication from, as a mentor, from lower levels to greater levels, okay? And so that first stage, as I mentioned, is denial, where someone just misses cultural significance altogether. Um, the second stage polarization, this is a mindset where you begin to judge difference, judge cultural differences. It comes in two forms. Um, one, one form is polarization reversal. And that's e-essentially where one is overly critical of their own primary cultural group. And polarization defense, where one is, is, is defensive of their primary cultural group. So in essence, us versus them, them versus us. Both of these are represented, are what was called monocultural mindsets. Um, moving beyond that, we move into minimization. Now, this is the first, um, of the, uh, mindsets that is a, a transitional mindset. And so in minimiz, in minimization, in essence, this is where one, um, will begin to overemphasize commonality. Um, they've, they've developed the skill set to be able to recognize, uh, similarities across differences. But those deeper recognition of differences, um, may cause, you know, a degree of deress or uncertainty. And as a strategy, sometimes they tend to just focus on how much we are alike. And, and, and so, um, that would again be minimization. Uh, moving out of minimization, what we come into is acceptance. This is where one begins to deeply comprehend cultural differences and be, begin to have a lot of questions and curiosity about culture, um, so much so that they don't always quite know what to do with that, right? And so they may guess, or, uh, they may have trouble walking the walk and talking the talk consistently. Um, still an intercultural mindset, but not to the level of consistency as the next stage is adaptation. And so in this last stage, what you have is, um, individuals who, it doesn't mean you have to know everything about every cultural group, but what it indicates is that over time, you have developed some bridging skills and techniques that help you, um, to be, uh, uh, what I call firm and flexible, um, and, and being able to adapt in different cultural contexts, right? Being able to develop a skill to be able to shift behavior and shift perspective given, you know, whatever that cultural context may be. And so the reason why I'm, I'm sharing this to you all is that in my work, what I found is that, um, you know, there's varying degrees of responses when, uh, uh, school districts or individuals, um, begin to become curious about engaging across differences, um, and, and, and committing to, um, um, you know, becoming skillful in engaging across differences. And so what I found, um, is this developmental model has been really helpful in my work to really come at individuals with a laser-like focus, um, understanding what gets in their way, what are some key areas based on their development, depending on where they're at on this, uh, continuum, and follow up with them with the individual development plan to help them folk. This model is that it's goal direct. And so, you know, and, and, and that may be of interest to you all as an intact group, because as an intact group, um, you know, together, leveraging your differences uh, for the success of not only, um, this committee, but, um, by extension, the school district. Um, you know, you can learn to develop more innovative, um, ways and, and, and more thoughtful ways in which, um, you can leverage your talent and providing direction to the school district, especially as, you know, there's been, um, an increased interest and desire and hunger for wanting to engage deeply in these concepts around diversity, equity, inclusion. So I thought, or, you know, we thought that this would be, um, helpful, you know, so that you have a, a, this my understanding of how, uh, we've been using, um, this framework, um, and, and using it as an overlay to the work that we're engaging in. And, um, and I certainly would, would love an opportunity, um, in another session to really focus deeply on the IDI. And then perhaps have you all take the assessment and then present an aggregate of where you're at as a collective and then invite you all, um, a- as you so choose to receive, um, individual feedback and support you in developing, um, a plan, uh, for your own growth and then perhaps, um, a plan as, um, an intact group. So just wanted to share that with you all. So you all have a, a, understanding of, you know, the work that, that we're using that's gonna center our work around DEI this year. So speaking of DEI, you know, we often have different, um, understanding when it comes to, um, these three words. And, uh, so what, what we wanna do tonight is to center or do some level setting around these terms. Cause we know that sometimes these terms can be contentious for folk, right? And so what we wanna do is to, um, center, uh, what, what, when we, when we're talking about diversity, equity, inclusion, just give you an idea of where we're coming from so that, um, we can, you know, all be, uh, you know, have the same level of understanding when we're referring to these concepts. So diversity, so what this means for us is diversity is essentially the fact of human difference that may make a difference, okay? Diversity is a neutral phenomenon. And so what do I mean by that? So, you know, you could have diversity, which we do, but it doesn't do anything in and of itself. It's what we, you know, is what, what, what we, what we do with regard to diversity that can create tension, create conflict, it also can create innovation, better ideas, or new perspectives. So diversity, um, the fact of human difference that may make a difference. So equity, so when we're talking about equity, um, ensuring fair treatment, um, and equality of opportunity and fairness and access to information and resources for all. So in our school district, what I've learned that, um, I think is, in, is noble and a good faith. I think that we sometimes conflate equity and equality. And, and these two, they're, they're very different. Um, you know, we clearly, we do equity work because equities exist, um, but, you know, equity is not equality. It's not saying tris treatment. You know, when I think of equity or systemic equity, it involves a robust system and dynamic processes consciously designed to create support and sustain, um, social justice. So that, that's what, what, you know, when I hear equity, that's what rings for me. And lastly, we have inclusion, okay? So for me, um, inclusion, um, really comes down, you know, to, to, to three, you know, uh, operative words, right? And so inclusion to me, um, it's about inviting, um, it's about all. And it's, it's about being, you know, sustaining these efforts, right? You know, we, we, we have to be intentional, um, that we invite all perspectives, right? And, and that we don't have to be in agreement. And we don't have to like everyone, but, but we certainly want to create an environment, um, that, that thrives and, 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 and supports the meeting folks, you know, where they are to get the most out of them so that the system, you know, benefits. And, you know, this is not something that we do just one time. You know, we, we have to sustain this, um, in order to be successful, um, in our efforts and being able to live out what it means to be inclusive, okay? So what we're gonna do, oh, we're going back and forth so fast here. So as I mentioned to you all, we don't have much time. Um, and I have taken the majority of it up, just rambling here with you all. But what I told you at the top of the hour, that, um, we want to, uh, be intentional about sort of laying down this groundwork so we can then start really getting into the weeds, right? And so what we're going to do, this is gonna be the more, getting into the more interactive, uh, uh, session of, um, our time tonight. Um, and so what I'm gonna do, we're gonna shift real quick and I'm gonna invite Jessica to the mic. And, uh, or is that cool, Justin? Okay, and then, um, we have some instructions, um, for the activity that we have prepared for you all of this evening. So give it up, Justin.
Alright. Right on time. Oops. How do I go back? There we go. Great. So we have reached the interactive portion of the day. I'm gonna leave up here for you for just a minute. And after I tell you a little bit about what we're going to do for probably, oh, about 20 minutes here, um, stop talking and let you guys do a little bit of work. Um, I'm not great at speaking into the mic. Sorry about that. Um, we're gonna do a little bit of thinking about what will our district look like when all of these things are true? When we are living out our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, get real concrete and specific. But what are we gonna see in the Ankeny Community School District when all of this is true? We'll give you guys a few minutes to think about that. Ooh, don't write yet. You're getting so excited. I like it. Um, let me say one more thing about why we're going to do this. Um, after we do that, we're gonna talk a little bit about what stands in our way, give you guys some time to weigh in collectively on that. Our real goal of this exercise is that the end of about these 20 minutes, we'll be able to pull out some themes, of some real things that we think stand in our way that are big rocks, we might wanna tackle in terms of our learning and our work and our goal setting this year, that will help us really chip away at some of those barriers that are standing between where we are now and where we will be when we are fully living out these visions, okay? So before you do that, you gotta know where you're going. And so now we're gonna get your markers ready. Grab whichever color I gave you that is not pink. It's something in the blue, yellow, green family. Cause here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna give you guys five minutes on your own to, and each post-it is its own idea, okay? What will it look like, sound like, or feel like when we are living out our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion? And I'll go back to those definitions just in case it's helpful. One idea per post-it, and Ken and I are gonna run around like little elves and pick up your post-its as you're working and post them in the front, okay? That, somebody can put five minutes on the clock. That would be great. As many ideas as you can think of. Five minutes, start now. Only ledger will enough for me during this. Look like, feel like, sound like. What are you gonna see here, you know? Yep.
Whatever worked for you.
Yes. About one more minute. Alright, for your very last one. Thank you. Alright. One more. Alright. As we are, oh, I got to speak into the mic. Alright, um, I was up there clustering because I think there's some real themes that were popping up. We're going to take now about, oh, maybe five or six minutes. And I just want to open up the floor to any of you who remember Samantha's guidance on if you're speaking, speak into the mic. Um, the kinds of things or the big themes that came out for you as you were doing your own reflections? Anybody want to share before I tell you some of the themes that I saw as we were gathering these from you?
Amy.
Uh, I said that all of our students will be able to operate in a world that does not look like Ankeny essentially.
Yes.
Successful.
Yeah, so a real outcome about what's going to be true for our kids when they leave here and what they'll be prepared to do. Great. You others?
I was thinking about just all kids feeling that they can take any type of coursework and be successful.
Those artificial barriers that people might have in their minds being removed.
Or people tell them.
Or people tell them, that's maybe even real barriers.
That's the next part, sorry.
That's right, nope, hang on to that. You can go ahead and cheat and write it on your pink paper if you want. Maybe one more and I'll tell you some of the like, things I saw across your group.
I thought about uh, consistency, where it doesn't matter what level, what subject, what opportunity, sorry, in the mic. Um, that the experience and the interactions you have as a student with, you know, the greater education community is, is consistent.
Awesome.
Supportive.
Awesome. So there's lots of great stuff up there and um, just in the interest of time and, you know, staying seated, um, we'll leave that stuff up there, stuff up there. So as we take a break, you all can take a look at it. But here's a couple of big themes that jumped out for me, um, as I was trying to sort of clump the post-its together that you all were sharing. There is a lot up there about a sense of unity and feeling really united, even with people that in a number of different ways might not be like us. There are reflections up there about that being true for staff and for students. I think um, we've had some real opportunities to like, as a community, demonstrate some unity. Um, and I, it was exciting to see the ways you all described what the unity might feel like um, when we've really realized this vision. I think alongside that, because I don't think we want to think of unity as uniformity, there's a lot about our district in all the ways need to reflect the big, bright, beautiful diverse world, to Amy's point, outside of Ankeny. Uh, there's comments up there about our staff need to reflect that. Our instructional materials need to reflect that. Our, I mean, Jim, to your point, our kids who might not be the first one who comes to mind for a particular activity need to have those activities so there is truly diversity and equity um, in all aspects of how we, of how we operate. And then there's a bunch up there that are really unique, specific outcomes that people think if we do this right, here's what will be true about discipline. Here's what will be true about test scores. Here's what will be true about the future that our kids can have for themselves and the ways they can contribute to society. So keep those all in mind, what you heard in this room, what you wrote. Now it's step two, get the pink post-its ready. Same exact kind of exercise. What is standing in our way? What are those barriers? Five minutes, one thought per post-it, because I'm going to clump them again. And then talk some more. Guys are using up the whole paper, I love it.
They're task oriented people.
Alright. They're falling, they're so many. Get my notebook.
I'm not going to eat down like that place today. Don't worry.
Alright. That couple, the one that you're just, the one that you're just dying to write, write it if you haven't and then we're going to talk. Alright, let's talk about it. Same thing we did last time. Big things that came to mind for you, I will tell you. There are more commonalities here. It was a lot easier to sort of clump these together than it was for our vision. Not that the vision was um, like contradictory, but you all were really on the same page about this. This was pretty cool. Um, big things that came to mind for you as you were post-it noting?
This is the interactive.
This is the interactive portion. Things that came to mind for you, the things that immediately came to mind before I tell you some of the trends that I saw when I pulled all your notes together.
Don't know what to do, I wrote that.
Don't know what to do. Scarcity mindset, if you get some, I don't get it.
I think just a understanding of where we're, what we're at currently. I know we've had data presented to us before, but really haven't had a chance to talk about what that means.
Yes. What, what's like current state of the union, right?
Yep. Uh, I wrote, I guess the same thing kind of twice, but uh, let's not hide from it. Ankeny itself, uh, the community, us, wearing it our own way.
You aren't the only one who has something up here that says, this is the way we've always done it. Tradition, community, not the people, but just sort of, this is our way. Kind of those, those traditions, right? Yep. Lack of exposure and fear of the unknown. Lots and lots. I think the word that is probably up here more than any other is the word sphere.
I mean, lack of courage.
Yes.
There's a.
All the ones that kept falling off the top, I don't know, maybe that's symbolic. They all said something about fear, there's probably 10 of them.
I put um, that Iowa nice mentality, mentality of don't make a fuss, don't make waves, don't upset anyone, just don't rock the boat.
You weren't the only one to say something about, we have to have the courage to do this if we're going to do it and it's going to be uncomfortable and we have to be okay with that. Failure to go deep. If we stay at the surface, everybody will smile, it'll all be okay. Really, if we're going to do it, we got to do it. Yep. Um, so just, I mean, we could stay here and talk about, this is, this is, I'm truly blown away by like, a consistent gem. What's up?
Well, I just, can we make sure we get all this from all of us?
If you think I'm not taking pictures, you're wrong. We are going to capture it.
Is this a great for all of us to see?
Absolutely. We're going to leave these up tonight during the breaks that you guys can take a look at it. But we'll also take some pictures. So here are sort of the big themes, we've hit on most of them, just kind of informally naming things that, that I saw up here. Um, we talked about fear, lots of like, man, this is, we've been, we know it's going to be hard, there might be some pushback. But I also hear, I see a lot of, in the way that fear is written, a lot of, but we got to do it. It's time to have the conversation. Um, there's also a lot, and I think this, I really appreciate the honesty here, a lot of like, there's stuff we don't know, right? We have learning to do, if we're going to do this, we got to do it right in a really thoughtful way. That doesn't mean it's going to be easy or that it's going to, we're going to brush things under the rug, but they keep falling. Um, but there's learning that has to be part of this. That's another one of the big barriers. Hey, we got to, we got to learn some stuff to do this right. Another big thing that's up here, um, is a reference to resources of different kinds. Some people wrote resources, other people were more specific about the kinds of resources that we might need to really move to a place where we're living out that vision. So we told you all that the reason that we were doing this activity tonight was to try to identify a couple of themes. And that's because as Ken said at the start, um, what we are really hoping to do with you all is engage in sort of a series of learnings, conversations that feel targeted to the biggest barriers that you named. Um, we have some ideas and we'll share those with you here in a minute about what some of those topics might be. But I think Ken and I and the rest of um, uh, our group might want to work with you all and figure out, how do we tackle these things that you all identified as the biggest barriers? As we're thinking about every couple of months, coming back and having another one of these conversations, getting more specific, digging into the data, talking about the current state of affairs. How do we make sure we're tackling the uncertainty, the fear, the lack of resources? How do we build that in to all of those future conversations? Cause you guys have identified those as things that really feel like they stand in our way. Let me tell you a little bit about what we have in mind and uh, and we'll take some questions. Alright. So we have started, um, you all are not the first group to get to do the posted activity. Um, we have started what we are calling a DEI learning series with all of these different groups of people. Some of them are a couple of weeks in, some of them are one meeting in, some of them are starting this week. Um, to really go through a process of learning as much as we can, tackling as many of those barriers as we can this year. Um, to really go through a process of learning as much as we can, tackling as many of those barriers as we can this year. So at the end of the year, we are able to set goals that have a commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion woven into that, right? Sometimes we set a separate equity goal. Our thinking is that this year we'll tee everybody up to weigh in on all of our goals, having sort of an equity component to them. And it's gonna take some work for us to have enough information about the current state of affairs, to do enough learning about, um, how DEI work is being done really well in other places, to get over some of that fear. But the whole idea is at the end, that's what we will be able to produce as a district. Thing is that we would do tonight's kickoff session, right? To sort of start identifying these big barriers. Come back, I say quarterly, but it's, it's not exactly every three months. Um, but dig into a topic. We'll show you what we have in mind. Make sure that these big barriers are woven in. And then Ken's also gonna share with you some additional opportunities that we have for deeper engagement for those of you that are interested in that. With our administrator, similar process. There will be an administrator meeting once a month where we are digging in to a particular topic through the lens of equity, looking at some national resources, looking at local data and trying to deal with some of the barriers that that group has identified, which aren't really that different from what you all identified tonight. And also having some, uh, extension learning opportunities for them. We are, I'm gonna skip over other staff for a second, cause that one starts this week. Um, with our PSYOP group, we started this. Our theme for the year with them is equity. Uh, in our first meeting, we did sort of a, an introduction kind of activity and collected some ideas. And we will continue at each of those PSYOP meetings to dig into particular topics through the lens of DEI. And again, at the end, they will put it all together and say, here's what we think the district goals should be through an equity lens. And we are already including, um, in our newsletters that go out to the community, that go out to our staff, that we are featuring what sort of quick tips, equity resources, uh, in all of those, uh, currently and, uh, when those are being published. Also really excited that we are going to be starting similar to an instructional leadership team, an equity leadership team. That will be an opportunity that will be open to all staff across the district. There will be a quick, simple kind of application, but to really express interest. And we'll get a small group of people together that will meet with Ken on a regular basis, sort of be his group of champions to figure out, how do we take these commitments? Operationalize them and take this commitment, start living it out in our building. So you guys will see more about that and hear more about that this week, but that's something that will open up to all staff. Um, that group will meet, uh, regularly over the course of the year. Uh, and we're also gonna do some surveys and figure out how this stuff is living out in our district in terms of climate and culture, but really through the lens of DEI. You gotta know where we are now, if we're gonna make things better, and that's some data we need to collect. I'm gonna hand this over to Ken for a second, partly because I can't talk through my mic, through my mask very well into a microphone. But Ken has some more information to share about some other opportunities.
So I told you this time it's gonna go by fast. Um, so with, with that, um, you all may have, um, if you remember, I think it was June or July, when I did an update to the board, um, I spoke about, uh, one of the, um, resources that we have been, um, engaging in. And that would be, um, our, the, the MAPS Center or the Midwestern Plains Equity Assistance Center. Um, they have provided a learning opportunity for faculty and staff, um, January 7th, 8th and, and 5th. Um, it'd be virtual, um, full day, I think like 8 to 3:30. And, uh, they're centered around, uh, strategic planning, um, and, and, and implementing, uh, equity in a system. And so I want to put that out there now because I would love to have representation, um, from two members of our board. Uh, we're gonna have like a, a team of about seven or eight, but if we have membership, um, you know, uh, uh, some proxies from our, from our board, uh, that would be wonderful. Um, again, as we start to, uh, you know, really dig deep and, 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 uh, focusing, um, our work on DEI, um, as it pertains to our system. Um, somewhat related, uh, as Jesse mentioned about the development of an internal equity team. Um, we're not going to abandon the current, um, equity committee that we have, but we're gonna revise, um, recast sort of the purpose so that this external group, um, that, that's made up of students, um, some board members, uh, faculty, staff, community members. Um, I wanna use them, um, to inform and to, um, um, be an advisory group to the internal group. So that, um, we have stakeholders, um, at the, at, at, um, around the table, um, that's informing the work and, and, you know, with, with the desire that, uh, we leave no stone unturned. And that, you know, we're getting inviting perspectives, uh, for those of, of us internally that's sort of charged for doing the heavy lifting, but it's informed by our stakeholders. So, um, and, and in a similar fashion, like with the internal, um, DEI champion team, um, we're going to, uh, uh, create an application process and, you know, have everyone that's currently in it, just have them apply and see if we can get, you know, new voices or what have you, um, and, 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 you know, revise, um, that structure, um, so that it's working in concert with, um, our internal committee. And, and, and finally, um, as I, as I spoke about, um, you know, we're just, we're just kinda dipping our toe. And, and, um, and if you know me and my work, I am not about one hour diversity commercials. I mean, this, this is work and, and you don't, you don't get better at something doing it one time. Can I get amen? I'm just saying, you, you don't get better at something doing it one time, whether you speak another language, um, you know, uh, you know, whatever your, your professional capacity, you didn't get to that point by just doing it one time. This work is no different. So we, we must be intentional about creating time and space, um, to be courageous and, and really engage, um, in, in doing this work so that we can get better, because it is an achievable capacity to gain proficiency and gain skills to be able to effectively move across differences. Um, but first we have to know where we're at, what's in our way, um, and then come up with some goals that's gonna help, you know, move our, you know, push our learning. So with that, um, we wanna come back in December and, and really go a little deeper, as I mentioned, um, before that time, administer the IDI to you all and, um, and then come back and, and talk about, you know, our group profile. And then after that, invite you individually, um, if, if you're interested to do a one-on-one individual session, uh, with me. Um, that's the only way that you can get your feedback is with a qualified administrator like myself. Um, and then as we move forward, uh, as I, as I talked about, uh, those, 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 uh, work sessions in January and February, I think will, um, support, um, you know, some of the strategic planning that, 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 that we want to move to, um, as we create goals going into the next year. Um, and then, and then, and again, and then, you know, just putting it all together, um, identifying, you know, what are some priorities? Some things could even be represented in this list today. And it's not to say that, you know, everything may not rise to the top. And that's not to say that it's not important. It's just, that's not what we have determined is our priorities for right now. We, we keep it present, um, but, but we focus our energies on what are maybe our top, to a top three that we really wanna, um, invest some time and resources and set some goals to see if we can disrupt some of the, um, inequities that we're seeing in our system. So with that, um, I talked way longer than I wanted to, but with the remaining time, I, I want to, um, give you all an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have.
Quick question.
Yes.
Um, can you, both kind of alluded to this, um, you know, things that we care about deeply, we measure and we have our strategic plan and vision metrics, uh, that go along with this. Um, where, where do you see and how do you see integrating this into our vision metrics so that we have, you know, uh, because we deem it important, it's gotta be something that we wanna measure and have measurables to. I recognize that's a process to get there, but, um, I don't wanna lose sight of the vision metrics that we, we have and still, you know, from the stra- strategic planning part. Um, just curious your thoughts on, on integrating this into that, uh, that larger plan.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I'm, I'm, and I think you may have heard, I don't wanna speak for, for, for Jesse. Um, I'm all about, um, you know, embedding, baking in, but also be very explicit so that it doesn't get so long, you know, cause it's so baked in, it gets lost in the sauce or something. Um, you know, how, how we do that? Um, I'm, 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 I'm certain, you know, I don't know, you know, with, with exact detail, but, but that is, um, that's, that's very pressing on our mind too, that, you know, our DEI goals are, are, are not just sort of, um, on the, they're the side dish, right? They're not just, you know, kind of left on the side and, and that we can opt in or opt out or what have you, that we bake them into, you know, our current, um, you know, sort of guiding principles, you know, and goals that, that we are, could deem, you know, important for, you know, our district.
I like the way Jesse kind of articulated that. This is, this is part of who we are.
Absolutely.
So it'll measure itself in variety of ways throughout those vision metrics. And for the, uh, the board that, you know, it's been a while since we opened that strategic plan. In fact, some of you may not have even seen the, the, the real roots of it. And it, it's probably time to, to re- regroup that anyway. And so this would be my opportunity as you get into the next phases of this. By next summer, it's time to crack open strategic plan and, and probably be doing that. You know, we'll have a new superintendent probably, um, by then, right?
He's down over there.
Yeah. And it's probably the right timing in terms of just the number of years it's been since that's been kind of, uh, a deep dive. So I think it's a good time.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
May I have just one thing to add? Do I have to go up there? Sorry. Bring him around.
So, uh, co-sign on the, it's probably time to relook at the strategic plan. Okay. It just represents where we were at a different point in time. Um, the other thing that I would add is if we are sticking with, which we are, cause it's what we have now, the strategic plan that is in place now, I think there's a way to pull up each of those metrics and do some simple things like cut the data, like front demographic groups where we might anticipate that we are seeing, um, a difference in people's experience. Do some things like set some interim gap goals and take a look at our all kids, our all staff, whatever, um, the, the group is that we're talking about. When we talk about, did we achieve this metric, we can talk about, did we achieve it consistently across all subgroups? That might feel particularly relevant. Sometimes that's going to be race, ethnicity. Sometimes that's going to be special education versus general education. But I think that's definitely something we could consider doing before we have a strategic plan or we have explicit equity goals written into a student achievement goal, a human resource or talent performance goal, things like that. Sure.
I appreciate all of that. And I knew you had, if you do need the goals from the district, what, what do you need from the board? On that, to help further the work that you, and then the question goes to you, Anthony.
I'll kick it off and then, and then Ken. Yes. We started a couple of minutes late.
We started a few minutes late, so.
Um, I'll kick it off and then I'll hand it over to, to Ken to wrap this up, okay? Um, I think, and I am speaking purely for myself, but sometimes I'm a little bit of a rattle rouser. Um, and I think there are moments where, I'll speak about the human resources team. We have set some explicit goals within the human resources team related to diversity of applicant pools that are not the goals that are necessarily measured in our strategic plan or in the vision card. I think what would help us feel like, hey, that is the right thing to drive towards, or it's okay to maybe take, um, half an eye off of one of those vision card metrics and drive towards some of these sort of interim department level goals um, that you are setting related to DEI. I think we're gonna get further faster. Um, and I think we're gonna find opportunities before we have a complete strategic plan like this equity leadership team, right? That's not written into a goal anywhere, um, where if we can justify, um, this was worth the time, energy, effort, because it is in service of ultimately where we are trying to go. Yellow and blue cards over there and share those kinds of updates with you. I think that would, that would help us really feel like we can put the foot on, on the gas before we get to the place where we have that like consistent updated strategic plan. I'm gonna go to Ken.
So I echo that and quite simply, um, you all as the board, you know, you, you know, you set the tone, um, you know, for, for, for all, you know, for our leadership, for which we can follow. So what I, my personal ask is to stay courageous, engage in doing the work. Um, build time like you're doing now to, to engage in doing the work. Um, it's, it's, it's hard work. It is hard work. Um, and, and we will see the evidence of that as you all continue to roll more of that. That's all I got for you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Me, really thank you for evening.
I would probably just follow up that, just with the proposed work sessions, like December, February, April. An hour doesn't feel like enough. So if, when you're creating and crafting those work sessions, if they need to be two hours, if we need to have them be like an off-cycle week or an off-board meeting week, you know, keep, keep the flexibility on the time you need us to be here for them, you know, the days of the week, you know, is it a Saturday morning thing? Do we really need to take more than an, you know? Don't feel like you have to be tied to an hour work session before a board meeting, if it isn't giving justice to the work that needs to be done.
Um, I.
Give you marching orders to do the work and then.
We have, we have.
And then shun you by not coming in to do the work. So.
We normally have like a big retreat in January, you know, but at the same time, don't wait for us to have an all-day retreat scheduled if there's other things that have priority that needs to be done. So. Keep creative with the timing and for most of us, if we know enough ahead of time, we can build that into our schedules as well. Awesome. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, let's take a two, three minute, five minute, perhaps, right? Re- reset, do whatever we need to do.
I'm gonna check out materials and get them out of your bag. We've got them out of here.
Okay, are we ready to go? Beth, are cameras on it? All righty. Since I didn't gavel, I'll gavel now. Call to order. We've already done our work session. May I have a motion to approve and accept this agenda with the amendment of item eight D, the amended personnel report?
Okay.
Is that good? Questions? No? Mary?
Yes.
Yes. Budge of allegiance?
I know.
I know. Yeah, it's a little different not having that echo. All right. I do not have any recognitions, communications from the public. Samantha, the first one I have down is Renee Potts from the Northview Student Union Organization. Is that, is that correct?
Yep. Renee, you're unmuted.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
How many minutes do I have?
I'm sorry. See, I'm thrown off with people in the room now. I need my script. On behalf of the board, I would like to invite Renee Potts to step to the microphone with comments of items of interest or concern. Please begin by stating your name and address. Thank you for limiting your comments to three minutes so we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion. We ask that you remember Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees, their job performance, or individual students, and thank you for your support of our school district.
Hi, my name is Renee Potts. My address is 2105 Northwest Abilene Road, Ankeny, Iowa. I want to thank the board for all of your efforts and challenges of having to go through the challenges this year of the school year. I'm a part of the newly established Northview Student Union Group. Our goal is to have students who want to be a part of promoting and supporting diversity and inclusion at Northview. We want students to think plus to act equals confidence. As a retired teacher, a current teacher associate, a mom of a seventh grader, and I'm also a part of the Excellence Through Equity Group, the very knowledgeable equity and diversity director, Kim Morris, has asked for a call to action. Our goal is for the students to talk about issues and concerns, but as, us as educators to provide support and assistance for students and wanting students to have a space. So our goal at Northview is even to be able to transfer into Centennial High School and continue to have that same space. Our group is off to a good start with 10 members posted and we're sharing ideas and thoughts of how to connect and support each other. It tried, it, it ties us together, excuse me, with other schools in the district such as Ankeny High School, Southview, and Centennial. So we, I want you to know this, that the work has started and is going on. I know some funding comes from sponsors, businesses, fundraising, and donations, but as we start to grow, I would like to propose at least a budget of $500 from the equity director's budget or the school board approve for funding of clerical materials, guest speakers, or registration fees for youth activities. It is vital and important that you support the students, wanted to be able to support their efforts and their interests and invest in our students at Northview along with my other allies within the school district who believe in this process of diversity and inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. I got Jennifer, Dr. Azinger, is there a process that student groups can go through or what do we, what do we know about how that works?
Sure, I know.
Whoever is the right one to answer, please be the one to jump in.
I'm assuming since they have a sponsor, Renee Potts, that they are, you said they're going to the principal to form a group.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I'll, I'll speak as loud as I can into the microphone. I said, I'm assuming.
That's better.
Since you are serving as the sponsor of the group, that you have submitted your, their quest form to create a, a student group and name a sponsor and you submit that to the principal. So I'm assuming that step has taken place and that would.
That has been taking place with Holly Anderson and Beth Walling. We have another individual teacher and myself that are considered the sponsors, yes.
Sure. So that's, that's wonderful to hear. So the next step then would be we would establish a, an account for you in a student activity fund within Northview. And student activity funds are, as you mentioned earlier, the revenue is generated through fundraisers. So I don't know if your group has done any, you know, any brainstorming as to how it might raise funds for, and, and what, you know, what is your outreach, I guess, or what is your intent to utilize those funds? So I guess that would be the next step then.
Is there also?
Well, we're running the, we're running the funds to be able to go towards, you know, having guest speakers and the students being able to put flyers up, to inform students about activities and things that are going on. I, I'm just concerned why the district doesn't support, I mean, doesn't pay for some of the funds of groups and organizations that are within the school. Because from whence I've come from, some of that had been sponsored by the different departments of the district and then they were able to assist and help fund those particular clubs or organizations.
I mean, that's a, that's a very good comment and question. I think we need to understand exactly that process so that it's all done correctly. So I think there's some good action out of that, just for clarity for everybody's in this room. So my question was about access to the Prairie Meadows Fund, grant funds that they could apply for would be one avenue that we perhaps pursue. Because obviously anytime you create a group, you've got to do it all the same, right? And there's protocols for that. And I think we just need to make sure that they're aware of all the availability that they can have in order to get the process, the, the organization off the ground, you know, the way they want, so.
Right. And, you know, Jen Lindemann, Dr. Lindemann would know better, but I, I know at certain points in time, we have, schools have elected to utilize some of the other surplus balances and maybe another activity fund to get, you know, to kind of kickstart that new club or program. But the fundraising is another option. There's also grants through the coffee shops at the two high schools would be another opportunity, the Prairie Meadows, Ankeny Foundation, and I'll turn it over to Jen.
I think that the point of clarity here is that for any group that meets out the school day, their funds typically come from activity funds as opposed to from general fund jobs. So we can't just take the, the school building allotment and then generate a determinate amount to give to a club, but we certainly can help clubs, A, identify fundraising efforts fairly, fairly readily, but B, look at other clubs who do a lot of fundraising and then offer to support the starting of new clubs. And so I would just encourage Renee to check with Holly, with the principal, and determine, are there clubs that might be willing to help generate kind of an initial start for your club until you can get it up and running through some activities that might generate some funds? You might also just work with the high school if this is a partnership group that's going to extend eight through 12, maybe you could work together on that. And I know there would be potential for some funds there. And then also someone mentioned the grants. In addition to the Prairie Meadows grants, we would also have foundation grants that might be available as well.
Are those money still available and what's the process of applying for those?
We have not done any Prairie Meadows grants new for this year because we haven't yet heard from Prairie Meadows what kind of funding might be available. We're a little concerned it might not be to the level that we've received in the past. Foundation grants, those of you on the board, any idea of the timeframe for foundation grants? We have an updated timeline?
I did ask this question last week after the prep of my head. I, I don't think that they've scheduled, we don't yet, but it's probably in the late fall.
Okay. So of the previous years, funding we received from Prairie Meadows, has all been distributed or is it still available? Do we spend all of that balance? That was a question I did.
We should have a balance left in there and we could take a look at that as well. If there's balance remaining, we could certainly look into that and see if we might distribute that. We'd want to do it effectively if there's these clubs existing in all, all of our secondaries, we could certainly look at that.
Is there a, a particular person that we can direct to follow up with Mrs. Potts or with, or that she should connect with after this to kind of?
She should first start, start with her building administration.
Okay.
In terms of funding, but certainly I can look into the current balance, where we're at there and then get in touch with the building principal.
Yeah, I think, I think I'm just needing to know that I, I can, I've talked with Holly and our principal, Mr. Slate. So it's just a matter of them sharing with me, what are some of the grants or foundations that are going to be available? But then, like you had mentioned, it's going to be important for us to do like a cosponsor, if this is a good idea, to do a cosponsor type of thing with Centennial. Is that correct?
Yep. And I'll, I'll also get back in touch with your principal and Holly regarding any available Prairie Meadows.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I have a, a bigger question, I guess. What can we do to not, to ensure we're not having this conversation with another group in three months? Can we put a, is there a how to sheet together for someone comes and says, hey, I want to start a student group? Here you go. Here's step one, two, three.
We, we have a process where people who want to start new groups apply through their activities director and it tells them on that explicitly that there aren't funds that come with raising of starting a group, but often groups get started and then they look for funds. Okay. So it's just a matter of communication and, and supporting them as they get started. There is a process. Okay.
And then does the district have a list of those fundraisers or grants or foundations that, that clubs can use? That would be a nice list to have for the principals and the activity directors.
Yes, I know that our activities directors typically have a list of available fundraising ideas. They're often contacted by folks looking for opportunities. So that would be a great place to start there. But as in terms of a, a list of all of the grants available, I don't know that we have that somewhere, but we could easily put something like that together on the website, I think, for teachers.
Yeah, that would be great. I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
We typically in January are outlining in a staff meeting letter the grant opportunities that staff members would have available to them. Because a lot of those apply to young, clubs and activities.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks for advocating for your group.
Okay, next up is Kelsey Lofgren.
Can you all hear me?
We can. On behalf of the board, I would like to invite Kelsey Lofgren to step to the microphone. with comments about items of interest or concern. Please begin by stating your name and address. Thank you for limiting your comments to three minutes so we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion. We ask that you remember Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees, their job performance, or individual students. And thank you for your support of our district.
All right, my name is Kelsey Lofgren and I live at 1210 Northeast 28th Street in Ankeny. And I also teach at Centennial High School. Like many parents in the community, I am worried about how my ninth grade daughter is coping with the hybrid model. She spends her remote days at home alone and I'm really anxious for her education to return to normal. That being said, as a teacher, I don't see how it's possible to return to learn at 100% while simultaneously upholding social distancing protocols. I teach English in this classroom. Hopefully you can advance that, Samantha. And here you see 16 students. When we return to learn at 100%, there will be 28 students in this room separated by inches, not feet. You can advance to the next slide, please. Science classrooms are by far the largest. On this day, there are 14 students present. When we return to learn at 100%, there will be 30 students sitting elbow to elbow. Advance, please. This final classroom is to many throughout the building, straight rows, students facing forward, and the room is already crowded. Imagine 28 students in this classroom. As a teacher, advance the slide, please. I have found ways to engage students in remote learning through technology that I believe makes the hybrid model a viable means of education. Pairdeck is a platform that allows students to interact with the curriculum and teachers to gain formative data about student learning remotely. Advance, please. Here is the student perspective. After reading a mentor text, students are asked to list several examples of showing in narrative writing. Advance the slide, please. And this is what the teacher sees all students answers. Even when students don't answer a question, that is important feedback. Advance. Here, I use Screencastify as I modeled how to analyze a poem. Through Jamboard, I annotated the poem while speaking so students could see me marking the text just as I would want them to mark the text. Advance. Finally, technology helps with organization. In each of my classes, there is an electronic remote learning folder in Google Classroom shown on the left. And on the right, you can see a Google document outlining the remote work for last week. Advance, please. So while I am anxious for my daughter's education to return to normal, meeting safety guidelines and a 100% return to learn are incompatible goals at this point in the pandemic. If safety boils down to social distancing masks and hand washing, we have only one of these three measures, masks, in place in each classroom at Centennial. And I do want to thank you for your time this evening and also for the extra time that you've allotted for teacher planning every Wednesday because that certainly made a significant difference in meeting the needs of remote learners.
Thank you.
I guess I would just like to say that, and I guess I'm a little disappointed in myself that a teacher had to go through the community avenue to share that information with us. That seems just not right. And maybe I could have requested to have a teacher come and, and show us how they've been teaching in the hybrid. So I blame myself, but that just feels very wrong to me that one of our teachers had to go through the community avenue to explain to us how she's teaching.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Lofgren or?
Is, is Pairdeck something that you're, you found on your own? Or what, what, how is that service being used throughout the district? Or how, I guess I'm trying to understand. I haven't heard that before.
Pairdeck is actually a Google add-on, so it works very well with Google Classroom. And I feel very fortunate because someone in the district had the foresight to purchase a premium account for every single teacher. And so I went to a training on PairSession like back of the, the three days that we had. I went to an hour-long training. And I've just diddled with it and learned more about it since that time. And again, I appreciate, maybe it was Al Nepel, honestly, I'm not sure, whoever made the decision to let us, to have the premium account. Because that's what enables me to see what kids are doing when they're at home.
Thank you.
Kelsey, have you seen an increase in interaction with Pairdeck? Or just in overall as we move through hybrid?
I would say that it's really hit or miss. There's some weeks where we say to kids, this is important. We're not going to be covering this in class. This is a review. And then there might be an uptick. Are kids all doing this consistently all the time? No. But like I mentioned in my presentation, when we see the numbers of kids that are participating compared to not participating, that's a really important feedback because it helps us know then what adjustments we need to make in the classroom. So for those students who respond, it's data about their learning. And it's also data for us about how X number of students got this concept or X number of students didn't participate or X number of students are ready to advance.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on. Oh, you have four more. I'm sorry, I forget about the people who aren't on the agenda. Go ahead, whoever's next. Elizabeth, were you able to hear the introduction that I had given to previous speakers?
I was. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, state your name and address and you've got your three minutes.
My name is Elizabeth Clark. I live at 7274 Northwest 19th Street in Ankeny, Iowa. I'm a, I'm a high school sophomore with on-ground experience with the hybrid model. My experience has made me a passionate supporter of the model in question, not only for safety, but for mental health and education reasons. With this hybrid model, I've been able to conquer four college classes with flying colors, all thanks to the amount of time that the hybrid has allowed me to contribute to my education. And for those who are saying that the hybrid model has cheapened our education, they have never learned in a hybrid model. My teachers are pushing us to have a deeper understanding of the material and a larger amount, amount of one-on-one assistance. I am getting an education with college classes and supportive teachers that I would never have been able to get in an all-in-person model. Without the hybrid model, I would, like many other high schoolers in my situation, I would be drowning in assignments and mounting stress. Onto safety. I cannot help but note that this meeting is safely social-distanced and mostly virtual while we discuss putting thousands of high schoolers, or a thousand high schoolers into one building all at once. Even with the hybrid model, many of my classes cannot maintain social distancing. From a student's point of view, many of my peers do not properly wear masks, but at least I can stay away from them. But will that continue if we are all crammed together? Please do not make me lose the valuable educational, mental health-improving, and safety opportunities that the hybrid model has offered me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay, Gemma, go ahead, state your name and address and then you'll have three minutes. Thank you. 10,000 were novel. Gemma, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We had a, a microphone issue here. We were unable to hear you. Samantha, are we?
Let me just, let me just ask. They're logged in onto accounts here, so I just need to figure out which one they want me to unmute.
Okay.
We'll try again. Okay, Gemma, you were unmuted. Okay. We're not getting any, any audio, so I might need you to try. Oh, okay, we're gonna switch.
That's fine.
Okay, Laurie, you're unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Yes. Hello. My name is Gemma Bollock. I'm a 10th grade student at Ankeny High School. I wanted to talk to you today about the recommendation for students 6th through 12th grade to return in full-person learning. I believe that we should remain in the hybrid system and I would like to share a few concerns that I have with returning to full in-person learning. The issue of space. There is enough space in the hallways, classrooms, or lunchroom for over 1,000 students to socially distance. This problem is made worse because I have personally observed students taking their masks off or wearing them incorrectly while teachers aren't watching and not following social distancing rules. In some classes, the only option we have is two-person desks. So students will be sitting five inches away from each other for 45 minutes. Also in hybrid, I have the ability to participate in activities like band and choir because of the small class sizes. The rooms that we practice in do not have the space to go back full-time. Secondly, going back full-time would give students the impression that everything is normal. As I said before, there is a problem at the high school with kids not wearing masks and not socially distanced. There is no doubt in my mind that giving these students the impression that everything is returning to normal will only make this problem worse. Finally, the hybrid gives me as a student more one-on-one time with my teachers. On my assigned days, I have more time to get all of my assignments done. I also feel like teachers are doing a good job with making sure students understand what they're learning and are developing relationships with their students. Thank you.
Thank you, Gemma.
And then lastly, we have Brian Adams. And Brian, you were unmuted.
Great, thank you. My name is Brian Adams. I live at 90, I'm sorry, 602 Southeast Wanda Drive. And I have heard the, the spiel before.
Okay, thank you. It's just spiel, I get it.
Sorry. I just wanted to take, take a moment tonight to just thank the board for all of the, the intentional effort and just say, say thank you for everything that you've done over this, this past, what is it? Nine months now? Eight, nine months? This morning, my third grader, he had a lot, lot of anxiety going back to, to a full, a full classroom. But when he came out of school this afternoon, I could almost see the smile through his mask. And he had, he had an amazing day. My seventh grader, who was on, on a hybrid day, he had his work done while I ran a one-hour errand. And I just, that concerns me. And I, I do appreciate that the 6th through 12th grade going back to school full-time is, is on the agenda tonight for a vote with a recommendation of the administration. But I just wanted to make sure that I did express my gratitude to the board for everything that you've done over the course of, of these, these months. And I know that a lot of us spoke up, board meeting after board meeting after board meeting, sometimes running until like 11, almost midnight. And I just thank you for your dedication and to our students and to our community. Because you fill an awesome role with amazing responsibility. And I just want to ensure that that doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you for everything that you've been doing and continue to do and your willingness to serve. And I just hope and ask that you continue that open-mindedness to continually ensure that our children receive the best education that they can. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Brian. So there is only three, Samantha?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, no, no, that's fine. I just didn't want to go past anyone. That is fine. Okay, moving on, the board rationale summary was in there. Consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve and accept the consent agenda items as recommended?
Motion.
Does anyone have questions about the consent agenda?
I have a question about the title program information.
Yeah.
Where I asked this.
Yep.
All right, let me find my notes here. I guess my, my question is with the surpluses we have in several categories. And I guess this is money for our, our kids who need it the most. And so I just want to know if I'm missing something or why, why we have such a carryover in some areas. Because when you look at it for next year, it looks like everything's budgeted to be spent. But yeah, we had carryover. So is that normal? Is that? Like we had 25, 1A basic.
We are allowed to carry over up to 15% of our allocation each year. Our allocation was cut significantly between last year and this year, the current year. So it was beneficial that we had that, that carryover. I believe what, the reason for the carryover this year was just the, the lack of time to get purchases made. And with the closure this spring, there was some instructional materials to be purchased.
So is this an anomaly or is this, you commonly carry over?
We don't commonly carry over. I mean, our allocation has kind of gone up and down over the years. It hasn't been real consistent. So it is largely personnel. So, you know, if it goes up slightly, we might have a carryover. And then the next year, if the allocation went down, then we utilize that. We continue to pay those expenses out of that.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question about, sorry, is it my phone? The Title 1A funds at East and Southeast. Both used funds to buy evidence-based instructional material. This might be for you, Jen. Do you have any idea what that was at those buildings?
I don't have any good one. Can we bring Amy to the board so she could? Sure.
And if it's easier to send a follow-up email, that's fine. I'm just curious if those were literacy or math-based or what those were.
Okay, Amy, you're unmuted. Amy, there was a question about the title, was it 1A?
Yeah, Title 1A. Was it East and Southeast for instructional materials? What materials were purchased?
I'll get that to you, Katie. I know she'll know.
Thank you.
You can loop me in on that or email all of us or?
And I guess my follow-up question would be, is that like one-time purchases? Is that part of an ongoing support in those buildings? Or, you know, is that fitting into like a longer-term thing or how that's working? Thank you.
Any additional questions about the consent agenda? All right, all in favor?
Yes, yes.
Yes. I oppose. All right. All right, thank you. Information only, construction project summary.
I would, I'm here, would entertain any questions. We, construction project was trending very well at both high school additions on both the north and south ends of the building until, first we start with the pandemic and then we get through that, and then we start with the derecho, and then we get through that, and now we have an October snowstorm. So.
Yes, don't say what else.
It rocked their world a little bit today, but I don't foresee it being a problem catching back up. If you've been by the sites, they're both full of rock. You'll see later on the board meeting, we'll be doing some final acceptance and some substantial completions on the summer projects. So I would entertain any questions for anybody on, we are bidding Parkview Phase 2 early December also.
I don't have a question, but just wanted to thank Tim, Erin, and I got to view Terrace Erding Center and Heritage Elementary. And the finished product was very, very nice and appreciated to be able to see and celebrate good things. And I know some of our other board members will enjoy seeing that someday too, but job well done by Tim and everyone that he works with on that whole end product. And he's talking about other things that are gonna have an end eventually. Thank you, Tim.
Well, I think that's a, that's all about the process too. We've done a really good job of putting user groups together, starting with Prairie Trail, moving under Rock Creek, and then on the Heritage with all of our principals, our administration team. And it makes the job easy at the end of the day when everybody puts their head together and says what's worked, what doesn't work. So we keep building the same product, but tweaking it to the ability we know how to. So hats off to everybody that was involved in making it happen and making the decisions to keep it, keep it financially responsible, but also make it a nice space for students to learn.
Any additional questions for Tim? All right, thank you so much, Tim. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting that we had earlier.
Yep, the minutes are in your packet and I'd be glad to answer any questions. We basically just covered CAR, SES, LEP, and a lot of things that we talked about at the last board meeting.
Any questions on those? It's different looking side to side instead of just at my grid on the computer. All right, Policy Committee.
The rationale for the Policy Committee meeting that we had a couple of days ago, our October Policy Committee meeting should be in your packet, explaining the proposed amendments to some of those policies. I will stand here in case there were any questions.
Does anyone have questions for Jesse about that? I don't see any.
I will sit.
Thank you. Revenue Expenditure Report, September 2020.
So the revenue expenditure reports were not provided in the packet. They were hot off the press this evening. So we had some little bit of technical issues getting our personnel budgeting to work with us, our software to get everything posted. So I wanted to share tonight with you the expenditures thus far through the end of September. And one of the things that may look a little alarming is the overall revenue compared to expenditure right now is about a $5.9 million deficit. I wanted to kind of just explain that a little bit to you. Our revenues are coming in really closely to what we had certified last year with the exception of one thing. And that would be the transfer from the before and after program. We had budgeted a transfer of $1 million this year. As you recall, we typically do that in the fall once we close the books for the fiscal year prior. And I am not recommending any transfer this year, just from the simple fact that there were no fees being, for tuition being collected during the time of the closure and we were continuing to pay those employees out of that program. So that's $1 million short in the revenue. And then in expenditures, as you recall, we talked a little bit about this last time. We have a committed fund balance of about $3.6 million, which is going to be spent this year for the Heritage FFNE, so the furniture, fixture, and equipment, for $900,000. The $1.7 million in staffing for Heritage. The 1 point, I'm sorry, it wasn't quite $1 million, just under $1 million for Chromebooks prepaid through three order of Chromebooks that did not come in in time before the end of the fiscal year. So all of those things combined comes to that $3.6 million. And we do anticipate spending all of that this year. In addition, we have a sizable amount of restricted balances carryover in some of our categorical monies as we were talking about earlier with Title. That was not the only exception. We've got some other funds that typically do get spent, but there were some year-end things that could not take place. So my assumption is quite a bit of that will also get spent. So I believe that was in the neighborhood of $2.5 million of restricted fund balance that's, that's sitting out there. And a lot of that did get budgeted here in the expenditures. We do have a healthy amount of substitute budgeted. So you can see that we increased that from about the $1.5 million mark to just over $2 million. You'll also notice that it looks like our, some of our salaries here are budgeted year to year from fiscal '20 to '21 look like they increased in some areas. Partially that is due to the staffing plan. We did increase staff. But another reason is because we moved the cash benefit, if you recall, for our hourly folks and also for administrators. We moved it from down below in the benefits, other benefits area. So that's actually showing a negative up to this, into the salary piece. So, you know, there's some of that going, going on to you at play. So I wanted to point that out to you as well. You'll also see a large increase in supplies. That's where the Chromebooks are sitting to be spent. As well as we carried over budgets for the buildings, allowing them to make those purposes that what they would have typically made in the spring, make them during this fiscal year. So there was about $350,000 to $400,000 that was carried over. So that's another reason why there is a large increase there and the Heritage FFNE. So we have, you know, we're showing it here as an expense. On the revenue side, like I said, I feel like the revenues are, we refine those quite a bit. As long as everything comes in as planned, you know, we should be right around that $146.5 million mark that are, that like I said, expenditures are right now. It's still very early though. I'm still looking at about $152,000 in expenditures. The last page has all the other funds on there and we did make some decreases to other funds as well. For instance, the Student Activity Funds and some of it, and here the Enterprise Fund, the Agency Fund, some of those that exist off of fees or fundraisers or things like that. And what else did I want to point out? And in the other capital projects, you'll see the remainder of Heritage getting expended. And then in the, the sales tax, you'll see quite a bit of an increase in expenditures, but that's due to high school additions. So. I know this is coming at you kind of cold tonight. We didn't have time to review it in your packet. But if you do formulate questions after reviewing it, just feel free to send me a message. I'm glad to know that.
It's okay if I get it now or on Friday, because I always need you to talk me through it anyways.
Does anyone have additional questions? No? Okay, thank you. 2020, 2021 IASB Convention Delegate and Legislative Platform. Who will be Dr. Azingur? Is that information you have for us or?
That convention is coming right up. Usually each board has a delegate that has an opportunity to vote on different resolutions and legislative priorities that the IASB comes up with. You probably need to select someone as your delegate who will represent you at the meeting. Probably should do that through a motion.
Additionally, that's been the sitting board president, but it's not always been because sometimes that board president can go or whatever the case might be. So we can choose that. Problem is the proximity to our organizational meeting and the start of this are right on top of each other. So we can make that decision either at the next meeting or wait till the 16th when the organizational meeting changes. It's fine either way, but that's, that's what, that's what's at hand at the moment.
Your way is okay, as long as you just have somebody.
In, in addition, there's opportunity for any of our board members to go to the convention. And so just need to indicate to Lori at this point, it's something you're interested in participating. It's all virtual this time, but we still have the same opportunities that you guys had last year.
And there is a small fee associated with it. It's, since it's virtual, it's not, it's not a lot of money at this point. But if you're interested, let either Lori know or let my office know.
Yep, just Luke, Dr. Azingur and I in it.
Yeah.
If you want to attend and we'll just make sure that everybody gets registered because usually the registration is done by the, usually it was Misty.
Misty's been doing that. Misty's been out for a while with the death of the family, so.
Somebody will.
Somebody will. We'll get, we'll get it done, but I'll probably find somebody else to do it.
Are we gonna go about that next meeting, this meeting or?
Well, not this meeting because it's not on the agenda, but we can, we can.
We could do that the next meeting.
Decide if we want to do it at the next meeting, right? So let's just decide to do it at the next meeting.
If anyone wants to volunteer, we only have, need one delegate.
Right, correct. Like I said, it doesn't have to be the board president.
And that's really the only thing the board probably ought to act on. It doesn't matter. You don't have to take any action about anybody else.
No.
Who wants to, Tim? Just the delegate.
Alrighty. I'm sure anybody can get on the IASB website too and see what the sessions are and, and how they're gonna be setting that up. So. It's coming up. Okay, we will move on to old business. Contracts and Agreements. Can I have a motion to approve the contracts and agreements as presented?
Motion, second.
Do we have any questions concerning those contracts? I don't see any. Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
I? Opposed. None. Okay, thank you. Construction Change Orders. May I have a motion to approve the construction change orders as presented? I know we had a chance to hear from Tim earlier. Does anyone have specific questions about the change orders? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I? Opposed. Great, thank you. Okay, Policies, Second and Final Reading. May I have a motion to approve the second final reading of the presented policies? Policies are for immediate implementation upon second and final reading.
Motion, second.
All right, questions about any of these final policies? I see none. All in favor?
Aye.
I? Opposed? All right, thank you. New business. Some procedural things here. We need to set the date for some public hearings. May I have a motion to approve the date for a public hearing for Parkview Phase 2 renovation for November 2, 2020 as presented?
Motion.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I? Opposed? None. Okay, thank you. Next, we are going to set the date for a public hearing for the Northview Middle School Rebirth Phase 2. May I have a motion to approve the date for the public hearing for Northview Middle School Rebuilding Phase 2 for November 2, 2020 as presented?
Motion, second.
No questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I? Opposed? All right, thank you. Next is the approving the election of officers at the November 16th, 2020 board meeting. Superintendent's Recommendation, this motion is being made with the understanding that this will create a variance from Iowa law, which states that the president shall serve a term of one year. However, the election of officers for the 2019 year was delayed due to election complications and it is recommended that the board realign its attempt to seat its officers in terms with the November election schedule. Approving the election of officers at the November 16th, 2020 board meeting as presented will do this.
Motion, second.
Does anyone have questions about? I know last time we had said it would be the first board meeting in November, but it will, it will be the second. Is that?
Yeah, typically it's after the election.
It's the first, it's usually the first board meeting after the election happens. So. No questions? Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I? Aye, yai, aye. All opposed? All right, thank you. Dee, flip a page correctly here. COVID-19 Considerations. Superintendent's Recommendation, establishing Monday, November 9, 2020 as the target date for return to full-time onsite instruction for 6th through 12th grades. Dr. Azingur, do you have anything you want to share with us about that? Okay.
Motion, second.
There we go.
Yeah, everything's been easy up to this point. Since I've been here, it seems that the, the return to learn plan has always envisioned students getting back to school onsite full-time. But done in a, in a safe manner and all that. As, you know, it's, as we all know, there's been a passion please on both sides of that argument. You gotta remember to talk into the microphone. On that. And one of the things that has happened is with the holidays coming up, we need to think about how quickly we can move into this if we do decide to go back to full-time onsite. So the November 9th target date is, is a call for establishing a date that we can move quickly on if conditions allow for that. Clearly, this is, this is, as we all know, this is hard to predict. It's hard to find good information and constant information about, about the number of cases. We've seen a real spike in things around us, but things in Ankeny and in Boe County remain relatively steady as it affects us on, on all of that. But in, in some ways, our, well, clearly our intent would be to keep a close watch on what happens during the next three weeks and continue to maintain that as a target date if all of the numbers turn out the way that we'd like for them to. If they don't, if they continue to, to increase, then I think we go back to the original issues that led us to the hybrid model in the first place. The thing that, the thing that would be good is if we can have a target date so that if we can move into that, we can do it quickly before we get into Thanksgiving and Christmas and, and a lot of that. Where there's enough, there's, there's already some issues and turmoil and just trying to keep schools running smoothly. So the recommendation is to establish that as a target date. It's, it's not a date that is set in stone at this moment. It's a date that we look at, that we plan toward, that we try to make work, provided all the, the health information Guides us toward that, that return to school. We've got a board meeting in between. The there, so again, if we keep a close watch on things, the board will have another opportunity to discuss that. At that point in time. And. And, and we, we move forward. We're, you know, we're aware that members are going up nationally and in Iowa. If that impacts us, we'll have to. Stay in that hybrid. Based on the return to learn. If it doesn't impact us and, you know, and several of you pointed out, there are schools in the area that have, that are full time. It hasn't seemed to make a lot of difference. On the other hand, just before we came in here, I saw, noticed that Iowa City had gone back full time. And their numbers just have ballooned. We've got more cases now than Des Moines does, Des Moines has more than twice the number of students that Iowa City has. So it's just hard to predict where things are going on. The recommendation is that we keep a close watch on where things are. If we can, we go, we can go back on the night. If we can't, it's typically where we are.
Just for clarity of discussion, it seemed to work pretty decent if we went around last time and people had a chance to ask their individual questions. So we didn't start losing track of people's focus. DeShara, I'll, I'll just kind of look at you. Do you have any? You're the first one on the line. I know, I don't have my spring grid to go from. Do you have any specific questions for Dr. Asinger about any of this? Is your mic on?
I turned it off because I heard whistling over there. But I don't know if it's questions as much as concerns because I too have followed the news and seeing all around us, all the numbers are going up. And so we're going right into the season that we've anticipated that happening. In addition to flu season. I don't see the benefit. Oh, outweighing the risk of us returning everyone to school and especially seeing how. Social distancing and all those measures are impacted by us increasing the numbers in the building. And then it is hard to talk in this math sometimes. But. I had another point I was gonna make. I'm just, I'm more concerned and we're nearing the end of a semester. So if we were returning before with the idea that we would kind of gather data and see how that goes with the preschool through fifth grade. That's such a short timeframe in between the two. And for that reason, you know, that just increases my concerns about us even looking at that option at this point.
Erin?
My comment is that we have a matrix that we put in place because it's set, a set of parameters to help us understand what we feel is the right way to go in this. And so. I think your point of this being a target and that we're going to watch that is the point, right? That, that, that was, should always be the case that. If numbers go this way or numbers go that way. I think your point about, you know, Boe County has been consistently in the seven, if we're going to average the percentages over the last several weeks, we saw some go down to five and then we've been as close to nine, right? Over the last month, two months, whatever those numbers, if you've been watching those. And so we'll have some opportunity over the next three weeks to see where that trend goes. And whether or not that's going to have an impact on us as, as schools. I do think we do have, maybe not our own group to watch, but we do have other districts that will have either already been in it or been in it before us to see. Again, what our community reactions are going to be and whether or not that's going to play into our decisions. So we'll have a little bit of that to, to look at.
He just referenced, do you know Iowa City? Is that who you said?
Right. Well, it's, you can say one this way, one this way, right? We're trying to put it all into one equation and try to understand. Collectively, what is, is, is for us because. You know, we've, we've said many times over these many weeks and months that. The, the. The grayness of the decision is difficult because we have one district doing this and one district doing that. So there isn't this set of. This is exactly how the right way to go forward is going to be and why we get to make that decision uniquely for Ankeny. And all of the variables that we want to put into play with that. I also think it's important to remember that the semester doesn't end until the middle of January. Mentally, we think it's Christmas because it used to be that a few years ago, but there's still a lot of the semester to go before we get back. To deal with. So that, I think we just need to understand really where that mentally, that, that, that semester break is, since we've got places to go. I also think that in three weeks that if the secondary numbers are far enough or the. The, the spread numbers are far enough up the scale that we, you know, secondary, we're going to have to revisit. The, what we're doing with our K, pre-K five as well. So we got a lot of decisions to, to be making over the next few weeks. But I do think we need to prepare, as Dr. Asinger said, the intention always was to move us back in. And we need to prepare for that and, and get us to, to that point at some point in our future. So if it's. If it wasn't two weeks ago and it's not this week, you know, the question then becomes when? And how we're going to manage dealing, dealing with this virus as a community. In a broader way. So that's just my kind of thoughts on, on the topic.
Kitty?
So this, the six twelve has weighed on me for a long time. Two Fridays ago, to Erin's point, I visited. I asked Jen specifically if I could visit secondary school. So I spent time at Centennial Prairie Ridge in Southview. And, you know, to your point, they are prepared. All of the, let me just start by saying I'm really grateful for all the administrators who took time to walk me around and talk me through things. It's very, very helpful and insightful for me. I think they are prepared, you know, they were able to very clearly talk me through, this is how the lunchroom situations are going to change. We're going to have to get rid of this. We're going to have to bring these in. Or to take all these, you know. Dusks back to the classroom that we're putting individual kids in in the cafeteria. It just is an example. So I know that they are prepared to make those changes. They recognize that. You know, as we've said, the desire is to get kids back when we, when we feel that we can do it safely. Those are really big bodies in small spaces and those pictures told the truth. Those kids are very, very close to each other now. I cannot fathom what it will be like with four hundred kids in those. Lunchrooms. And, and my, my concern. It's not that I don't, I don't want anybody to hear that I don't want those kids to ever go back. I, I feel this personally in my own home. I have a child who needs to be back every day. But if I just look at positivity rates from the emails that we've sent in the last three weeks, we went from six point four percent to five point seven percent. So last Thursday said six point nine percent. This morning it was at seven point two percent. That is not trending in the right direction to put large people. Back in classrooms. And, and I know that we voted on a decision making matrix. And we, we've said it's a guide for us, but I have concerns when we look at zip code data, five zero zero two three. And is up to between eight, nine percent in its positivity rate. So. I want to do this and I want to do it safely. And I don't feel that we have a lot of data locally that says that. Maybe this is, is the, the right decision for those bigger kids. As we've talked about, they. They can get sick and I, and I have a lot of concern about that. And I felt a lot of. Anxiousness when I was in those buildings. From, from students and staff. Like I said, they're, they're team players. I've heard from everybody will do it if this is what the board wants. But I. I just personally have a sense with the way that we are currently seeing the, the data trend. I know when we met two weeks ago. We could say it looked like it was going in the right direction. It was going down. We were at five point nine or whatever. And I, and I guess that there's going to be ups and downs. But what we hear from, from everyone is like, we're, we're coming indoors now. We're not in the great outdoors like we were for the first part of this pandemic. So. I, I guess I have all felt. Feel like there's merit in. And even this just weighs on me to think that we're running some sort of grand experiment with our K five. I don't want that to be how it is, but. I, I, I want to see how this looks for us. At the K five level, I think before I, before I'm ready to commit to thinking about sending these things back. So that's where I am.
Ryan?
I guess just my. My biggest concern and, and it's never going to get answered until we get any type of assessment data back. So I'm. I'm curious. I know that secondary conferences were last week. Is that right? And so there would, there would have to be some kind of assessment data to talk about, I would imagine. So do we, do we have any? Of that assessment data as far as, you know, percentages where we're at as comparison to last year or? How the students are doing currently in the hybrid model? Sorry.
So the answer to your question, Ryan, is no, we would not have any formal secondary data. Really, we will have some elementary data here soon. Our window just closed and I, and I told you we're, we're putting that together. Secondary, we don't have any of that. We may have a little at six, seven, because we do do the fast testing through grade seven. What you're referring to in terms of conferences, any data teachers would be sharing would be local classroom data that they're collecting on students, evidence of their learning towards standards in the class. So. Teachers would have data on individual students, but we don't have a standardized system.
Yeah, I, I guess I hear, you know, the students that spoke tonight and I commend them for their amazing efforts and happy for them. But I think, you know, we hear from the other side too. I can't remember who, I can't remember who or what, but it, it sounds like there are some, there are some. Definitely, there's a big disparity between the people that are doing really well and then the people, the classrooms where they're getting, you know, they're lucky to get half, half percent participating. So. I just, I'm really stuck on the, the fact that we're, we're missing out and a lot of education for a lot of kids. Especially as it relates to. The secondary where they kind of probably have a little more freedom to do, do or not do. At home, but. In any case, I understand, I, I, as far as the data is concerned, I, I personally, you know, and just kind of looking over. Since the pandemic started, there are ebbs and flows and I think, you know, this, this method of kind of checking week by week and having a target date is, is a really. You know, logical way to go about this. I don't, I don't know that I'm ready to say, you know. We either don't do it this semester or we do do it this semester. I think to make a decision with, with that much impact as far as. So. I, I have my son's conference tomorrow night, so I'll be able to know how the element, how he's doing on an elementary level, but the fact that we don't. Fact that we can't have any type of assessment data to, to make a decision on. If the hybrid is actually working from an educational perspective is really concerning to me because I would just, just from the emails that we've received and the community feedback that. That we've received, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's varying levels and that is not what we're going after. We're going after. You know, something much better than that. And so I'm increasingly concerned about that aspect of it as we move. To wait another three weeks before we even look at sending secondary back. At an increased capacity. So. You know, I, I know last week was a, there was a mention of possibly looking at it a week earlier than that, but. You know, I guess I'll defer to. You know, the recommendation for a target date. So that we're prepared for sure, as long as there's a target date. That's all.
Jim?
First of all, I could just talk about the mindset of how can we make this work instead of how can we not make it work? Because our end goal, I think eventually is to get all our kids back safely. When our, when our teachers talked today about kids participating in the, what was the name of that program?
Correct.
Right? And then they talked about the blanks, the people who weren't engaged. And that concerns me because I think there are many great students who've spoke. They're engaged. And then there's many who have not spoken or are not engaged. And I don't know what that is that I worry about because our first hour today, we talked about equity. inclusion. Inversity. And I don't think all of our kids. Are. Being included. And it's not maybe meeting all of their needs. Some of the kids, it's grateful. But I don't know if it's for all of our kids towards. Hybrid, even though there's pockets of greatness. So that does concern me. And I do think we have to set a target. If our numbers change or we believe it's not safe, then I guess that's what we do because that's what we said we would do. There was a question in one of our emails the other day about. Paid a ride. And maybe I could just ask that, where are we at with paid a ride? Because some of our constituents are concerned about their kids getting to school, secondary kids, I think. Oh, maybe, I don't know, probably both. But if we could, maybe just have Darren share that because I know Darren's the guy. Thanks, Darren.
So. From the start of the school year, we have not opened up paid a ride, as you know, we're trying to limit the, the crowding on the buses as much as possible. Durham has been collecting ridership data through the hybrid. Today with our, our pre-K five, they started collecting ridership data on what it looks like on those routes with one hundred percent ridership. Now. Not everybody rides every day and all of that, but we'll have those, those numbers. We're particularly concerned about what secondary looks like when we go back to one hundred percent. Because of the way that we do the transfer at secondary without spending a ton of time this afternoon, many students get on a bus at their school, go to a, a, a transfer spot and then get on a different bus to go the trip home. We want to make sure that there's enough room for everybody safely before we open up paid a ride, but. We do anticipate as soon as we have those numbers, being able to open it up. I'd like to open it up for the rest of the year rather than, in the past, we've gone semester by semester. That doesn't seem to make any sense this year. But it is our goal to open it up as soon as possible.
Thank you. You know, basically that's all I have.
Jim, is, is your mic on?
Yes.
Oh.
That's all I have to say.
Sorry, I had, I had someone message me that they were having a hard time hearing you, so I wanted to make sure. Sorry. Wanted to make sure you were heard. Amy?
It's just a lot to unpack here. I don't know if it's good to go towards the end or not, good to go towards the end. As I expressed in my last, at the last meeting. I know we're hanging our hats on. Faculty or teachers absent rate. And to me, it's that sub fill rate is still. Something that. I want to keep up, getting updates on. Because like I said, and this goes for elementary too, and we'll see how that goes. If people are truly concerned about education, just shoving an adult in a room for an hour and a classroom gets eight different subs in a day, that's not education. So I want to keep hearing about, are we able to fill these subs, sub rates? I echo a lot of what Katie said. Just the numbers. But I also struggle with. We can't vote on what we think might happen. We did make a commitment to the matrix and so I see that side of it as well. Clearly making no decision one way or the other here. Erin, I struggle with, you started your statement with, we have other districts to look at, and then you ended your statement with. We can't look at them because someone will take Iowa City and someone will take, I, I don't think it behooves us. To look at other districts because you have an Iowa City, you have a West Des Moines. I don't know what their mask rate. Wearing a mask rate is, I, I don't know what their halls look like. Waki is on a block schedule. That makes a difference. So I think the comparing of other districts. We just have to get away from that. I don't think it does us any good.
I just, at the broad level, and I, I agree with you one on one, it's typical, just trying to look at the whole metro collectively and see how that goes. That's, that's kind of where I'm at with it. So that's a good. So that's a good point.
I am concerned that numerous students said, and I have heard in other areas, that, that high school kids are taking their masks off when they, a teacher turns their back or teachers aren't enforcing masks all the time. So Jim, you spoke of how can we make this work? That's great. But what are your ideas? How do we get a modicum of social distancing? If we're going to make this work, I'd love to hear ideas. How do, how do we get a little, little social distancing with a thousand kids in a high school? How do we eat lunch? I, I'm open to ideas of making it work. I just, there aren't a lot of them out there when you start putting all of those bodies in the high schools and the middle schools. So using hallways, I'm, I'm open to anything. Sitting in the bathroom and doing their work, I don't know. I'm open to anything, but I'm not, I'm, I'm hearing a call for ideas, but I'm not hearing any ideas. So you can't just say, I want to know how it can work and how it can't work and then not bring anything to the table.
I think in part, some of that has to come from our staff.
Yes, and I would love to hear that. And maybe, again, I should have asked for that early. So that is on me. But and then we have zip code data now. At some point, do we give some credence to that? Do we stick with Polk County data? Because I know early, early, early on, we asked for zip code data and, and we weren't getting it. And if we are. So do we, we put some weight on that or does it stay the same with Polk County? Ryan, you asked for data and, and you're not getting your data. And do we typically have high school assessments now? We're not, we're not not doing them because of hybrid, right? Okay, so it, it's not like we're trying to hide the data. We don't typically do assessments right now. But you're, you're wanting to add data to household stories that we get in emails. And, and I, I struggle with that because we, we got to stay away from that as well. We get emails from both sides. We get examples, we get kids emailing us, kids calling in, taking that step up, putting themselves out there. I appreciate those kids that did that today. But we cannot start adding weight and data to personal family stories. Because that is a slippery slope. Now, I feel for every one of those families that emails us. Don't think that I'm coming across as someone that's cold and I'm feeling. I feel every one of them, but we have to be able, if data is what we want, then we have to, we can't apply data to a personal story.
That wasn't the point. The point is that we are getting such a difference in those stories.
Yes.
And that speaks to inequity and that was the point.
But I guess I also see that as even every household is different. So where's the inequity falling? Is it all falling on the district? Is it all our fault?
I think it hasn't changed. I mean, there's always a partnership between schools and, and households. So I don't think that has changed at all.
But I don't, I don't think every inequity is, is, is falling on our shoulders.
I'm 100%, 100% speaking to what we're doing to ensure that every student has access and to the education.
Absolutely.
And so like, I think the, you know, Mrs. Loff, Loffler, right? You know, she's using an amazing tool called Pair. And even she said, I wrote it down. Part of what she said was for those students who respond, it's hit and miss. Those are things that speak to inequity that I think we can be, you know, in better control of. That the hybrid model is failing one and that, that's the point.
And, and I, I look at it from an angle of, do we really think kids aren't checked out when they're in the classroom? You know, if kids aren't responding to this, this online tool, there's also a chance that, I mean, I've been in the classroom. Kids are checked out when they're in the classroom.
I've been in a lot of classrooms my whole life and it's a whole lot easier for a teacher to address their needs in person if they're checked out. Say get them unchecked out if they're worth their salt. And anyone that knows that has been in the classroom a lot. But if you're not in person, it's a lot harder to get all of those kids and that's a concern.
Well, we had that same teacher use that platform saying that she likes it and it's working and she's literally on the front line. She's the one doing the teaching.
Right, for those who participate.
Right, but she says she's getting feedback and data on those that aren't. So she can take the extra steps to reach the ones that aren't. She didn't just stop with, oh, they're not participating, so I'm not going to do anything about that. It's not.
The, the hard part when somebody doesn't respond is that you can't really do anything about it. So I understand that she's not going to quit and I'm not by any stretch suggesting that anybody in this district is quitting on students. I'm saying the hybrid model is broken and it in itself creates inequities because we had to put it together in a way that does not account for mitigation strategies for these, for these students who are either choosing not to participate because there's, because they don't, I mean, they're, they're on their own. Or they don't have the opportunity to participate because they don't have the technological skills or technological, I don't know, like fast wifi or a computer that allows them to access the material on a consistent basis.
We have taken mitigation of this, both of those last.
And yet we still have problems. That's the point.
But I don't, I don't, I guess I don't know that we have problems with kids not having computers or not having connectivity. I've, I've heard that, I asked for that data in the last meeting, but I think it'll take a while to get to us.
Well, I understand that you're not a fan of household data or household stories, but we have heard stories from households with connection problems. And, you know, I do give credence to those parents who are telling us about that because I don't, I don't imagine they're lying to us. But so I guess I'm not quite sure, you're, you're telling me that I'm asking for too much data, but you're asking me to give you specific data.
No, no.
The problem, here, the, the point is, and the problem is that we don't know. And that's my point. We don't know, we can't leave the education of these kids up to chance. And the hybrid model leaves it up to chance because we don't know. We might, yeah, you're right. Okay, so the high school kids aren't, they're not, they're not being assessed or the secondary is not being assessed. But in the last meeting, Dr. Lindeman did say that we are doing less assessment because we're trying to get more instructional time in the classroom. So we're doing what the state requires, we're not doing what Anken usually does. To me, that really stinks. Because that means that we're not, we're not assessing to the level that, that we believe it is what we should be doing. And so that's, I just, I, I don't know how to, how to better explain my position to you. I think, you know, maybe we're just going to have to agree to disagree. Because to me, it's very evident that there are inequities in the system, the model and the hybrid model. And that's the point.
I, I don't discount that there's inequities. But at some point, safety has to be a factor. They don't hear a lot of that and.
That's because I trust that the administration is taking the proper safety precautions when they're giving us a recommendation that we can go back on the pandemic.
Well, we heard from a teacher tonight that doesn't think that can happen. We heard, we've got emails from other teachers who are very concerned about it. So yes, administration is giving us a recommendation, but I would also want to give weight to those teachers who are literally in the classroom saying, I can't, I can't do this.
For every teacher that says they can't do it, I know there's teachers that say they can. But they don't feel comfortable saying that in the public setting because then I think that they'll be in trouble for doing that. And that's something I believe is just one of those challenges. Because I hear from just as many people know that they are comfortable with doing it as the ones who say they can't. So.
Well, I can't, I don't get those emails, so I can't base anything on hypothetical. Those emails don't come to me. So I, I, I don't know how I'm supposed to address that. Just, it's truly a balance. And, and the fact that we're not testing as much as Anken usually does, yes, that is disappointing. But we are also in the middle of a pandemic.
I just, I want that to be a factor that everybody heard because I think that we're missing that when we continue highlighting what our norm is. Nothing about where we are is a norm and we're all tired of it, but it's not an option.
I don't think anybody here has said anything about a norm. I think what we're saying is that.
I've heard a lot of people say we need to get things back to normal.
Okay, I didn't hear that tonight.
Okay, I've heard it quite a bit over the last.
I, I thought we were talking about tonight. Well, I, I, I just, I firmly believe that if our administration is putting forth a recommendation that we can do this, that they've taken all the, all the proper precautions, they've asked all the questions. I believe that they have considered the teachers, the students and everybody. If that's, and if this is the target date, then I'm trusting that they know that it can happen. And that's, so I guess I'm, I just, that's, that's, that's where I'm placing my trust in. Because I can't go off of anecdotal data that doesn't exist.
Let me be clear what, what that recommendation really means, Ryan. The sense that I think we need to set that as a target date. And I don't think we're saying at this point that we have utmost confidence that everything is safe until we get closer to that date and find out what the, what the data says about it. So I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to mislead in saying that we think everything's just fine. And come November ninth, we're going to do this. I think there's lots of information that we want to see before we get there. I just think if we can plan toward that date and the information supports us coming back full time, that we'll be better off in terms of just moving into that. But the recommendation, and I, again, I want to be clear, is not saying that everything is all fine right now. And come whatever, we will be doing this on November ninth. I think it's a date we target, it's a date we watch how things sort out and what happens. And we rely on the same kind of information we've been relying on. I, I just, I just think if we set a target date, it'll, it'll move us in some direction or another. So I, I, I want to be clear about that.
Thank you, I understand.
And I, I, I'm happy to vote on something that's a target date. I just don't want us to approve this and then lose sight of all the other things that we've talked about. That is my fear. And so that's why I bring those things up. Because again, it, this, the six, 12 weighs on me a ton more than the, the pre K five, which also still weighs on me. I just don't want us to lose sight if we approve this night, it is a target date and we don't lose sight of what our responsibility is, both educational and safety. We just need to hold on to both of those aspects in this, well, we should always be worried about safety, but it's heightened now. I don't want us to just approve this and then let it ride and not continue to address things that we need to address.
All right. Because, you know, I hear what you're saying and it's kind of this, kind of a needle that we're trying to stand on in terms of what data helps us, what data doesn't help us, how do we make these decisions? Because I, I, I totally agree with Dr. Azing or about, okay, this is what it is. And what I mentioned earlier, that we're going to, going to let the matrix be a, a guideline as this as we go forward. And so I appreciate the point about let's make sure we don't forget that. I think that's a great commitment to make sure. I don't think we will, but we'll let them just make sure we keep that in the forefront of, of the conversation. So the question is around, I mean, if, if we're going to struggle with what data to use in order to make decisions, I think if you have something in mind that would, how do you say, this is what I'm going to use as my guide in order to make that decision?
No, no.
I mean, that's just a pure honest question because I'm curious.
I get it, I committed to the matrix and, and that's where I will stay and continue to live in the matrix.
Luca or the Red Hill.
I just, I struggle with, and I said this at the beginning, I struggle with my mind wanting to go to what I think and what I'm afraid is going to happen. And so I have to vote against my own best interests and that, I, I'm struggling with that a great deal. And so.
I think we all are, that's why I'm asking you, just because we all have to try to wrestle with that in our minds. And I'm just, was curious about where you mentally are, are jostling all that.
If we're in the matrix, that, that's fine. I just, some of the things we bring up, I, I, I struggle with. You know, that there is inequity or inequality, whichever term you want to use. But I also struggle with the fact that if a child's not healthy, something happens to a child, inequity is nothing. And so I, I, put a lot of this, I don't know if everyone knows what Maslow's hierarchy of needs are, but I have used that as a lens. And if you don't have your basic needs and your safety and your security, you cannot achieve any higher level in Maslow's hierarchy. And so I've been using that a lot as I look through all of this stuff.
Where do you feel, that, that's a great point. Where do you feel, because sometimes I think we talk about this conversation as if it's in a vacuum. Mentioned a couple of things ago about being too narrow and I do think we can broaden this conversation out because our choice tonight isn't just one sided equation. And I'm curious to know, or maybe we don't know, what the, how that plays out in our current state, right? Because it does negatively affect someone either side. Whether which way you want to go, there's potential risk for that basic need challenge to be hurting. Like where are our current students right now in that hierarchy versus what it would look like the other way around, right? I'm not asking for a definitive answer, but that, I think you're, you're honing in on the, maybe the broader piece of how we look at what we're providing to our community. It's not, there's two sides to that conversation, right?
Yes.
Basic needs, thank you, are really, I think, whether you're on, you're on a hybrid side or a full time side or whatever, or even total virtual. Everyone's needs to be a part of a group or a part of school or a part of something in their educational life probably varies. So if someone's feeling really good about things right now, then some of those are not. So it's like, how do we really meet all their needs? I think that's your point. So it is, I mean, there's the basic needs. Maslow is very true, you can't learn if you aren't feeling safe. I understand that.
It's just a broader, I, I think it's a good point and it's, and it is, it does help broaden out the, I think, the decision making in the conversation.
Also.
Good job.
No, Amy, I would, I would totally agree with that because then it opens up that even broader question of what is the ability of the schools to provide the needs that aren't being met? And what is our, our greater responsibility as a school system to provide some of those societal needs that, that aren't being met? And, you know, we want to provide everything for every kid so that they can learn. And, and part of that, you know, is taking on a role that isn't, or shouldn't necessarily just be the schools. You know, we've, we've done what we can to provide the, the computers, the, the hotspots, you know, the free lunches, the, you know, the social workers, the guidance counselors. It's like we're trying to provide every single thing to take care of all of those basic needs. And we're just one cog in the wheel of society. And, and that's really hard to know that we just can't fix everything our kids need at every level. I struggle with that too, because I just, I want to make sure that they're fed and they're supervised and they're, they have what they need and, and all of that. And, and we can't, as, as a school system, we can't do it all. And that's really hard to, to have to let go of, especially when we're used to an Ankeny doing it all really well.
Right.
All the time when pandemics aren't here. And so I, I really, really feel. And so I, I really, really feel that along with you because we, we, we're moms, we wanna fix things. We, because that's what we do, um, just as a mom. But, um, I do see it as that, that counterbalance, you know, kind of to what you were talking about, Ryan. It's when you bring the people back, it pushes, you know, Erin has alluded to this too. It pushes back against the other things that we can do. You can't, because like you said, nothing happens in a vacuum. You bring the kids back and you're gonna lose parts of the mitigation that has probably been helping things be what they are. You're at the elementary schools, you've got some more tools in your toolkit because you're cohorting kids together. You can, you know, send them outside, you can get some of that recess time to circulate your air, you can control those little bodies a little bit more about keeping your masks on and washing your hands and doing all of those things. And we just know by nature, we're gonna lose that at the six through twelve, because you know, yes, some of our elementaries have, you know, six eighty, seven hundred kids of them, some only have three or four hundred. Both our high schools have over a thousand. In a relatively, and they're changing classes, they're changing exposures, they're changing teachers every hour. And so that's, that is the, the yin to the yang of bringing, you know, and to Amy's point earlier, and, and Katie and everybody who talked about separating out these two pre K through five and then six through twelve, because they kind of are different animals in how they, they work. And the support that they need and the interactions they have outside of schools and their mobility and their freedom and all of those things. I think it was really good that we did separate out those two. Um, I, I'm glad the district, um, added, made that target date November ninth, because it's gonna give us that two to three weeks to really look at what happens. What's that real life application of we're bringing these kids back? And, because we, as, as a scientist, you have to have that real life experience. I hate that we're having that real life experience with real people because we're asking a lot. I work in healthcare, you know, I've been living that experience going and, and being around people who are ill. I knew that going into it. Our families didn't anticipate that, our staff didn't anticipate that going into what is now considered by a lot of the country as an essential worker role. You know, that was never, in a way, our teachers and, and our staff have signed up for a lot of essential work over the years when it comes to Alice training and all the, the things that we ask them to do for us. And adding another thing right now is really hard to ask on top of everything. But we, we know that, that our kids and students have always come first. I have a big if, and I, I spoke with Dr. Azing here about this, of, you know, that target date of November nine is what's happening in our community when it comes to our infection rates. We had a big jump in our student infection rates. We had a big jump in our staff infection rates from last week to this week. Is that a blip? Is that a trend? We, we, we don't know. And so for me, you know, the vote tonight is very contingent with that big if on the end of it. If that matrix is applicable three weeks from now, then our kids can come back. But we do have to give this, the, the staff and the schools, it just takes time to move a thousand desks around the district. It takes time to set up mitigation. And we owe our staff that time to do that. If it gets to be the Thursday before November nine and the data comes out of four weeks of trending in a direction, it's not three weeks worth of physical work to decide to stay in hybrid. It's, you just don't use the desks that are in the room. And that's a gross oversimplification, of course. But the ability to turn it around this way in a smaller timeframe versus deciding on a Thursday to have everybody come back on a Monday, I think is, would be drastically impossible. But, I mean, and like you said, you know, the inequities are, there's kids who aren't, aren't engaging. There's always kids who aren't engaging. Um, there's always families who struggle. Whether you're not in a pandemic and everybody's in school full-time. There's kids whose voices are being heard right now that never got a chance to be heard before because they're in a class, you know, the, the advantages of having smaller classes have always been there. They're not a reason to stay in the hybrid, of course, because we wouldn't do this if there wasn't a pandemic going on. But at the same time, it gives a bit of a perspective to it that not every part of being in this hybrid mode is bad. There are things that we can use to our advantage because of it. We're preparing our seniors right now to go to college and attend class two to three days a week and still get the learning they have to learn. Otherwise, nobody would go to college. That's, that's just how it is. You know, we're, we're setting our kids up for some independence that we're, we ask a lot of kids and ninety-nine percent of them will rise to our expectations. And that one percent we're always gonna have to work with. I've, I've gone back and forth, like, like you said, Amy, of, you know, I think I have an answer. And then I wake up the next day and I am thinking something different. And I think the recommendation tonight, having it be a target date and not a date that is chiseled in stone, no matter what, is, is the responsible thing to do. And I understand creating ambiguity for families is hard. We've had to think that ambiguity in our lives since March and we're tired of it. We want, I want this decision to be easy. I want the teachers to all feel good about it. I want the students to all feel good about it. I want black and white when it comes to these decisions. And it's just not gonna happen. We, we do the best we can.
For a while.
Yeah.
I, I do think, Lauren, I think your point is good. And I think, uh, we all understand that this is asterix. I mean, and that's the point of the matrix. And I think that's good to, to hold in on. But when we vote for this, we gave, we say, okay, this is our intention. And I think we're all, most, a lot of us watching online know how to watch the data. So I don't think it'll be too much of a surprise.
Shouldn't be shocked.
Right, which direction this moves them through weeks. So I think preparing our system, um, to do this, targeting on the ninth, will have the, that mental opportunities to watch this data go where it's gonna go. And then it's gonna be more telling. So I do think it, it's not quite as ambiguous as some of the things we've done, even though it's not a, we're gonna do this on this date. Um, but I do think the intention of wanting to do this on this date is a big step forward, uh, in this process. So I think.
Yeah. And, and I think being really clear, we, we owe the public the clarity of knowing that we're all watching the same, the same numbers. Sometimes how those numbers are kind of interpreted when it comes to like staff percentages. We're like, you know, if our, just our administrative team tells us that we can function at a six percent or six and a half percent staff, staff global absence because of the mix of how those staff are, are laid out, there may be a time where we're only at four percent absent, but they're all teachers and we can't function like that. That's their job to inform the recommendation that comes to us. I don't, I don't feel qualified to second guess their ability to interpret their own numbers and how they do the Tetris game of who, who fills in what slots, what positions. I, I have to trust them to tell me it's working or it's not. Students, I mean, yeah, like you said, you know, ten students in a room or twenty students in a room, you still have to have a teacher. And so it's, it's very difficult. I feel like, yeah, we just have to be super, super clear and super forward-thinking with, with our students, especially at that secondary level, because they're watching. They watch these numbers too. They watch the students around them. We've had evidence of this tonight. The anxiety they are feeling, especially at that high school level, is the anxiety we're all feeling. And so we owe them as much information, I think, as we owe parents when it comes to what we're doing and why we're doing it. And, and that we're all just, like you said, we're, we're looking at these numbers. And so be prepared either way. Act accordingly in the community either way. We want these numbers to turn around. We all know what we have to do inside and outside of, of the school. And, and we've hammered on that a lot too.
Can I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
I certainly hope that this concern with inequity, to share a touch on this a little bit last time, doesn't end if coronavirus ever ends, if coronavirus ever ends. Because the people who, the, the families who, who are struggling with internet access and computers have always struggled with internet access and computers. And I haven't been on the school board very long, but talk of inequity in this town, this is the first I'm hearing it mentioned very often. So I certainly hope that we carry those conversations on after coronavirus is over and, uh, continue to, uh, try to meet the inequities of all of the kids in our district.
There's a lot of things percolating to the surface that, you know, were very, you know, they just kind of moved along underneath the, the top of the waves and
Yep.
It's not always a bad thing to have that stuff. It's uncomfortable to have it come up. But if, if you don't see it, you can't fix it, you can't do anything about it.
It was there. People didn't wanna see it. It's
Not untrue. It wasn't, it wasn't in front of their faces. And so they didn't see it.
I think the good news is, I mean, clearly the pandemic has heightened, heightened, exposed it and heightened it. We have more people with food insecurity or more people with lack of internet access, like that, it's just more than it was before. But this board has made a commitment, pandemic or not, to addressing equity. And so, uh, you know, I believe as, as role models and as leaders, it's our job to keep that at the forefront of the conversation regardless of whether the, the pandemic.
Which is why I think it has to be part of our vision metrics and our three D plan.
I didn't mean to get us off topic.
No, that's okay.
It's, it's in the topic.
If it comes in, it, it all wraps around.
Amidst all the pain and the heartache of something like this, there are opportunities to
Oh, absolutely.
benefits and learn some new things. And, uh, we can all be better as a society coming out of this with a lot of new skills.
Hundred percent.
And I, just one last quick point. I remember Dr. Azing, and this wasn't said tonight, but he did previously make a comment of concern that once we choose to go hundred percent and whatever becomes of that, there is no turning back. And I think about that when we look at our choices, um, based on the current measures versus a situation that we haven't entered into yet and what can happen as a result. I think that still holds true because again, we haven't gotten there yet. So sometimes I think it's misunderstood, you know, those of us who vote differently, you know, it's not that we don't want the kids to go back, but at what cost? You know, um, all the states are trending upward except for two states. And so part of that is because they've attributed that to the return to schools and many other things. But I'm, I'm looking at all of those, what's in the data and what's not, because we can't look at all the data for those things just yet. So, I don't know.
Yeah, what's happening right now began two, three weeks ago when it comes to positivity.
Yeah, and looking at those images that Kelsey Lofgren, um, shared with us of her classroom, you know, is, that's a very real factual situation that is going to impact what becomes of our decisions.
And I haven't heard it mentioned tonight, but teacher safety, staff safety, that's a, a whole other element to this that I don't know many of us touched on very much, that has to be a consideration. A school literally can't function if there's no one there to run it.
I, I don't think we can separate student and staff safety. I mean, it's gotta be all, you know, I mean, I, I, I think there are aspects of it.
They're, they're just looking at, it, it's varying levels. Um, it's gonna affect a staff
Sure, yeah.
Different than a student. Like I, I'm not so blind to know that kids aren't affected the way adults are. I, I understand that. And I just don't want our staff and faculty to get lost in all of this and, and to think that I'm only concerned about the safety of the students, because that is not the case.
If one teacher goes out at the secondary level, it's hundreds of students that they would potentially be teaching for that course of their absence that are gonna lose the, the gift of that teacher for that time. And, and that's huge. That's, that's huge. There are things we can control and, and things we can't do.
Wear your mask, wash your hands, all, all, everything, everyone's heard.
So can I ask a question kind of walking forward? I mean, I think it's been made clear that this, I'm assuming will be an agenda item on the second. Does that sound right?
Yes.
And the data we'll be using would be from the previous Thursday? Is that how that will work, from Thursday to twenty ninth, or is that what we anticipate?
Yes.
Well, and the, and the current Iowa positivity numbers.
For that.
Whatever, I mean, I think
Our, our local numbers versus.
I think, I think we'll see two more weeks.
And, and theoretically, we will have between our board member on, our board meeting on the not, the second, returning on the ninth, there is that extra third, that one extra Thursday of information in there, the fifth, that will come out that could, could have an impact on that and would give us time to act in, in a, in a emergent board meeting way.
Right.
If they felt it, it needed to be done.
That's a good point, Lori, because somebody asked that today, I think, emails. We can meet anytime we want, twenty-four hours in advance, or even special if we need to. So we can make it work however it needs to work.
Dr. A actually, uh, sent that to one of our constituents and we all saw it. So, so that was pretty clear.
So there, there is an extra week's capacity to gather information if we need it.
You know, Lori, can I add something kind of in response to what you shared?
Absolutely.
One of the things, you know, there's, it seems to me on my emails, there's not a lot of people that are in agreement on this from both sides. But one thing, everybody seems to be in agreement on is we don't wanna get into some kind of a yo-yo kind of thing where we start and stop and start and stop. And, and if you think about that, I, I just say to keep in mind, we probably ought to be sort of conservative about how we move forward with the, with the whole high school piece. Because that's where it may hit us quicker than, than the elementary piece in terms of that.
And at the same time, you know, appreciating not being able to see forward, uh, so we only have backwards to look at, you know, hindsight is twenty-twenty. Had we gone back on the fifth, you know, we might've had, all things equal, a month where it seemed was ethic. And then we would, you know, have more leeway. We didn't make that decision, is what it is. But we're always on that, which side of this trend line are we gonna be? And we're gonna have to make those decisions and try to keep exactly what Dr. Azing was saying uh, out of the equation, the yo-yoing. Um, because I think you're right, that is the common agreement. Let's not go back on Tuesday and out on Wednesday.
Well, like you said, you know, give or take a day or so, from November ninth to Thanksgiving is about three weeks. From Thanksgiving to Christmas is about three weeks. After winter break comes back to the end of the semester is about three weeks. And so there is a tipping point of, is what you're going to decide create more chaos in a system that's already gonna have a lot of ups and downs because of just the natural flow of the holidays and the season and people gathering and doing all the things that people really want to be able to do. And at the same time, maybe shouldn't be and, and not, not leaning to those safety oriented things. We all feel so strongly about this and wanting, wanting to do it right. Is there any information that anyone feels they need to ask or need clarification on before we can vote?
I just wanna, I mean, it was clear both from our board, uh, report on Friday and the rationale, a tremendous amount of thought has gone into this and you know, I, there is not You you could talk either side of this. This was very clear by all the communication that you guys put forth. And so. I know hours and hours of conversation and thought went into that, and I just. Really appreciate it. It's gotta be hard to land on a recommendation. So thank you for for everything that you've put you've put into that.
Definitely.
Amen.
Amen. Um, just for continuity, we'll just kind of start and go around and do a just a roll call vote. That way we. Don't lose any. Voices in the mix.
Yes is for the target date.
Yes is for establishing Monday, November ninth as the target date. For return to full time onsite instruction for six through twelve, knowing all the information that we've learned from the conversations. Earlier tonight. Sure?
No.
Yes.
Amy?
No.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Thank you all very much. Uh, now comes to uh board member reports. I'll start in the differentiation, Amy. I know, it's mixed up a little bit.
Uh, um, just. Repetitive, but thank you to all the administration. All of the teachers, all of the students, all of the families. Um. I. I I carry you with me every day. Um, sorry. Please don't think that I don't, um. I value all of you, um, and. These decisions are so hard, and I don't want anyone to think that. That I don't put thought or effort or um consideration into them. Um. And to my fellow board members, um, I'm so appreciative of all of you. And Ryan, if I felt like I was attacking you, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to come off that way. Um. I just learned so much from all of you, and I appreciate that so much because, you know, uh. We are a school board, but learning never ends and learning from other people that should never end. And so I appreciate all that I have learned through this process. From everyone that has been involved. Um. And so I I hope we can. Stick with elementary. I I I today sounded like it went great. I hope it continues. I hope we can get the. The six through twelve back and everyone is safe and we can find a way to make this work. Um. Along with keeping everyone safe. Um, that has always been my goal, no matter how I voted or how it seemed. Um. Getting kids back is very important. And um I just hope that everybody puts in the work and the effort and the time and is safe when they leave their house. And their kids are safe when they leave their house, so we can get in this and stay in this. And uh just keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Erica, follow Amy. It does take all of us to make this work, and I do appreciate all the people actually in the trenches doing. Uh, hard work behind the scenes, preparing for K five or pre-K five and then uh six twelve. Um, but it also takes a family's responsibility in um emphasizing all the safety precautions too. So. Encourage all of our families who are listening to do that. Um. Obviously, all the board want. All the board wants is educate the kids best we can and obviously keep everyone safe. Uh, thanks for that work session today. A couple mentioned how it was nice it was to talk about something else. And um, obviously, equity, diversity, inclusion. Fits very nicely with everything we've been talking about, and we do need to stay with that after the COVID. Um, and it's nice that people put in the effort to get us in the boardroom together. I know that was a lot of work. And I appreciate that because we wanna model. You know, we're in the same room together, trying to do this stuff, and uh. I just appreciate, I know that wasn't easy because we had some tech issues. So whoever did that, thank you very much, because I know. Uh, that took some effort. That's all I have. Thanks, everybody.
Ryan?
All right. Amy, I did not feel like you were personally attacking me. You said my name, though, so I had to respond.
Fair enough, fair enough.
I uh, um, I can appreciate being able to have passionate debate. Um. You know, ob- obviously, we we just think very differently. And it's the same with all of us on the board, and I think that's why it's so important that we can remain civil. Even though we may raise our voices or cut each other off, uh at the end of the day, like we're. Yeah, it's, so in any case, yeah, um. I uh was able to go to one of the football games this last uh Ankeny Hawks game against Indiana where. Um, I apologize to the Indiana people, but we we trounced them. It was a beating. And my son made me stay to the end of the game. I mean, I was like, dude, it's over. He's like, I just wanna watch the end. I was like, all right. Watch the end. He loved it. So thanks for the tickets and uh. Uh, just love uh being able to get out there and support when I can. Um, and then we had an Orbis meeting. Um, it's very. Uh introductory, but I'm so glad. It felt like we didn't have meetings for a long time, so I'm glad to get back into those. And I feel like I'm a part of these committees and I haven't met. With any of them. So I'm excited to get back into the swing of those. Um, but just really appreciate all the work that everybody's doing and uh. Let's keep, let's keep moving forward.
Amy?
Again, just wanna uh shout out to Jen and the administrators of the secondary buildings for um taking time to show me around and talk me through a lot of the work that they've been doing. Um, I would just echo a lot of the things that Jim gave specifically about the work session and uh getting us back in the boardroom. I really appreciate the effort that's went into all of those things, so. All right.
Um, uh, Jim mentioned it earlier, but I also wanna thank uh Tim Simkins for the tour and for Jim actually setting it up. Uh, it was good to see um. Heritage insight um and the progress there, and they've got a fantastic facility. I hadn't been in the Terrace Learning Center um in for a long time, and it was great to. Um, catch up. And what was so fascinating uh is, you know, we have, we have such a. A great leader in Tim in organizing what he does for us, and and there was a gentleman in the building um who. Who probably hit him up every five or ten minutes to ask him a question or inform him about something. And so I know we have a very engaged group that are committed to making sure our facilities are what they are. They stay functioning, they stay clean, they stay open, they stay, you know, together. And that's a, was just kind of a reminder to me uh on that tour, and it was uh. It was good to be out. I would encourage anybody who hasn't had a chance to see our new facility, you know, in normal times, you know, we would have all had a group tour out there a couple of times. Just missed that. So at some point, we'll do some kind of ribbon cutting, I'm sure, celebration of that piece, but. You know, um, go see the the efforts that uh that our team has put together. So again, just a shout out to 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 Tim on that, so. And of course, I think there's been a lot of good things um discussed tonight, and I too. Um, think the the fact that we reflect to the community is is a good thing and that we can dialogue around these topics uh passionately is is good. And I wanna. Make sure we keep that up in it in the healthy way it can be. So thank you for uh that part of the process, too.
Sure.
Everything they just said, and then, oh wow. And then I just wanted to take a second to acknowledge last week, I did not stand up for the um pledge allegiance. And it actually was not intentional. Um, but I wanted to also, um. I guess build on the point that Ryan said, we all come to this table as elected representatives to make the best decisions we can for our school district. And with that, we bring our own background and experiences. And I think that some of the um. I don't wanna say backlash, but for lack of a better word, some of the frustrations surrounding my failure to stand up, I don't know if I was looking for my glasses or whatever I was doing. By the time I turned around, everybody was standing up and speaking. And I I saw myself as an opportunity, hearing some of the things that were said, um, just to gain a better understanding. Of um of each other. And even though my my actions weren't intentional. Um, I was kind of shocked and would. I don't know, I think it's an opportunity for us to build a better bridge and to exercise uh more kindness, grace, and compassion, and to be. More open minded and even understanding that all of our experiences are different with um Iowa, with. This country, you know, and so I just wanted to speak on that because I haven't. Addressed it in any any form or any sort of way. And I think that's where we we show the example that we want our kids to follow. And creating that blueprint versus the latter. So. And thank you to everybody who allowed us to come in this room and to um to just look at each other outside of a computer screen. I think that. You know, that presents its own challenges, and we've all been living in a world of Zoom and virtual um reality. So. You know, to what they said, it's really nice to be in here with everybody.
Definitely. Although I have to look so many more directions now.
Oh, yeah.
Um, no, thank you to that. Um, I just wanna say a thank you to Dr. Asinger, too. You stepped in a district in the. Middle of probably one of the most challenging times. Not untrue. And so I just wanna thank you for being steady and and being thoughtful and being willing to engage. With all sorts of questions that you probably don't feel you have all the answers to yet, but we just really appreciate it. I know, I know, I appreciate it, and I. Feel confident speaking for the rest of us. Just thank you for that, because it has been incredibly helpful. To let Dr. Lindeman and the rest of the team do what they do best and have that captain of the ship, so to speak. So I I just wanted to put that out there, too. And and the acknowledgement to you that um. We know the the anxiety this is, this decision maker for our staff. Um, for our, for our students, for families on all sides of it, because we are hearing all of it, and. We're living it. We we live in homes with, and we have family members who are teachers and. Kids who want to go back full time and kids who wanna stay hybrid and kids who are in remote. And so don't think that because we. Make a decision that is really hard, that we're not. Really cognizant of of what that means for the people. Who who live with these decisions and um. There there's a great um. Little toolkit that. Those of us who work in healthcare learn about compartmentalizing, because you can't. You you can't always have the the mental space to feel everything all the time that you do. And you have to think about what is is personal in your decisions and your life, and then you have to think about what your. What your job is, and you kind of sometimes have to draw that wall between those two, because that is the only way. To exist in a healthy way. And I think a lot of what we do here is we, as board members, we have to compartmentalize. If all things only mattered for what mattered in our lives and in our reality and our homes. And then take that little piece of it. And put a little box around it, and then look at what happens to our district and our system and the parts of that as a whole. And so sometimes it may feel that those two things float together really easily. And then there's times where those teen, those two things butt heads and they are in disagreement with each other. And I think that's one of the hardest things that we have to do as a board is is try to circle those squares around each other. Um, I'm sure it happens in administration. I'm sure it happens in classrooms. Knowing what if we only had to think about what worked best for us and then weigh that against the whole. And and that's why this is hard work, and I'm so thankful that all of you are doing it. With me and with us, and I hope that we can continue. To keep working in this way that values all of that from each other, and I'm just really grateful for that, and I'm grateful that we have. Forward and and do what is best to prioritize. Our students and our staff and their health and safety, because, you know, like we said, that the. Point was to be able to always come back in a way that felt normal and felt what we thought it was going to be. But also understanding that we can also do the things that are hard. And make sure that our kids are taught and that our kids are safe too. But um, on that note, thank you all, and I will turn it over to Dr. Asinger for his superintendent report.
I'll be short, uh, but I just, I wanna let everybody know that. Every elementary school in the district was visited by one of the administrators in this room this morning. And uh, for my personal thoughts on that, it was great to get back and see what we're really about. It's. Easy to sit over here and deal with the business, and it was really fun to see the kids. This morning. Everything from everyone I've heard from, everything ran pretty smooth, and you heard that repeated here. Uh, today, I think probably the biggest problem we had was some of the traffic of parents dropping their kids off.
That's every year, not just now.
But the uh, this, the the schools we got in were were great. I got, I got a lot of tours. I I actually gotta go to the school my grandson attends. And I had to explain to him last night why he had to go to school today.
How many questions did you get if today was gonna be a snow day?
Oh, oh, well, yeah, I got a couple of. I got that, and uh. And actually, my my granddaughter texted me and said, are you gonna let us on early?
You were not the only person in this room that got messages like that.
She thought she did. I said, there's not a very good chance of that happening. I didn't hear a back. That's all I, we dealt with each other things I. They're on my list, so we're fine.
Got me taking a drink there. All right, um, we have no closed session. May I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Thank you all.